Marty, you're here.
Actually, it's Rachel. I'm kind of being Marty tonight. She is still sick. How you doing?
Good. Oops, hi Rachel.
Hi.
Hey Rachel, this is Jess. Thanks for, thanks for being Marty for us.
Absolutely. It's a tough job, let me tell you.
I see you are recording. I will take copious notes to the best of my ability.
Okay.
Mr. McFeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Can you hear me okay?
Good afternoon, Chair Aunt Taveras. I hear you, I hear you great. How do you hear us?
I, I hear you all. So I was just doing the pre-meeting sound check, so.
It's a good check to do.
Yeah, okay, couple more minutes and we'll start the study session.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. McFeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveras again. It's four o'clock, so would you please start the study session? We don't have to have a quorum of commissioners present, so let's begin.
Okay, thank you, Chair Aunt Taveras. I would refer you and the, and the other commissioners with us to your study session agenda. We will start your study session agenda with reviewing applications that will be heard at your regularly, regularly scheduled public hearing on January 4th. We have two public hearing cases for that hearing scheduled. And Bob Short is presenting both of those. So Bob, if you want to go ahead and share your screen, the first of these will be DRO 2208. That's a design review. Actually, it's, it's, it's a, an update essentially, but a, a design review change to one already approved by the commission. And that one is located within the design review overlay for the Fort Valley area plan. So Bob, if you've, if you've got your information prepared, you could go ahead and share your screen and discuss DRO 2208 with the commissioners.
Uh, thank you, thank you Jess, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, it looks like the screen sharing, I'm not, haven't made a co-host yet, so I can't.
So.
Bob, I'm on it right now.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thanks. Well, commissioners, while we're waiting, okay, Bob, why don't you go ahead and try?
There we go, alright.
Alright.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Thanks Jess. Uh, this is the Aspen Village Design Review. It's DRO 22008. And you saw this about a year ago. And the applicant decided they wanted to make a, just actually one, one major change uh, to their, to their design, so I'll go ahead and go through that with you. Uh, this is the Aspen Village. It's right across the street from our offices, like I was saying earlier, Jess is sitting right here and looking out the window at that, that lot right now. So these three lots are involved with this case. And this is the site plan for that, if you'll remember, I'm, I'm sure you probably do, most of you do. Uh, this is the building that they'd like to make the change on. They're also adding, it looks like they're adding the pavement to their driveway where before they had proposed gravel and the commission had indicated they wanted to see pavement, so so they've added that as well. Anyway, this is the building, this is a, a kind of a store office building on the corner right there. And they wanted to, to change the design of it. And staff indicated they'd have to come to the commission to, to change the design. It seemed to work out for them pretty well, because we can, you would hear this on January 4th. And this is, excuse me, the new design. So as you can tell, it's more of a western style. And it looks, actually, it looks a little bit more consistent with the Fort Valley area plan, so it, it really should, should work just fine. Also note that the north elevation and the south elevation are the same, so what they see from the parking lot inside the complex development would be the same as would be seen from outside. Uh, this signage here has not been determined yet, because they don't know who might lease the building, what kind of business it might be. So that will, that will be, probably be left for staff to approve later. The zoning ordinance doesn't allow staff to approve signage in a DRO area. And one more thing to show you. Excuse me? This is the rendering from Fort Valley Road, so look at that building right there. And that, that, that would be the change, basically. Quite a bit of a change, actually, but only one building. So with that, does the commission have any questions?
Mr. Short, uh, this is Chair Aunt Taveras again. I'm not seeing any, so go ahead and move to the next case.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess from staff again. The second case for public hearing for next month's regular scheduled public hearing on January 4th is CUP 22-119. It'll be a conditional use permit for, I believe, it's, I believe it's six met towers. A combination of 60 meter and 100 meter met towers. And our property owner here is Babbitt Ranches. Um, do you have a representative with SWCA who has represented some, some energy projects before? Bob will be presenting this case as well, so go ahead, Bob.
Thank you Jess, and Madam Chair and Commissioner. This is the forged ethic met towers, CUP 22119. And this would be the precursor before what we expect to be the forged ethic wind farm that would be. And I'll go ahead and show you a map, but it would be on the, on the further east side of Babbitt Ranches. The owners, Babbitt Ranches, this is done by RWE Renewal Americas out of Chicago. Uh, Joe Grams is, Joe Grams from SWICA is the environmental consultant out of Flagstaff. And it's actually five, I need to change that, but the request is for five temporary meteorological towers. Each tower is supposed on about two acres, as always. A two acre portion of property and there are three total parcels and that, the total area is over 26,000 acres, so really large lots, as always. Uh, did I say six? Actually, there would be five. I, I didn't, I need to change that. Okay, so this is the site. You can see Flagstaff down here, highway 180 going up to Valley. So it's kind of half of between 89 and 180. Uh, SP crater, no, SP crater is right in this area somewhere. And this is their site plan, so there are two 60 meter meteorological towers. And it looks like they've, they've started doing, some of these have started asking for taller towers. So this is a, these, these blue ones would be 100 meter towers. The yellow ones are 60 meter. The 60 meter tower is the 197.8 feet or something like that. Which is less than 200 feet, doesn't require lighting, so these 100 meter towers are much taller than that. They would, they would require lighting on the top. And that's an FAA requirement, so the airplanes can see them when they get up over the 200 feet level. Uh, and as you can see, this is SP crater right here. You can see the plume that is actually a lava field. And then this would be the entrance to go back all the way, you can go back all the way to 180. This is on CO Bar Ranch, part of the Babbitt Ranches. With that, any questions from the commission?
Uh, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Mr. Short, I'm not seeing any. So, Mr. McFeely, let's move to the next item. Mr. McFeely, I think you're muted.
Uh, thank you, Chair Aunt Taveras. I appreciate that. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen with our agenda. So we can all be seeing at the same time. Is everyone seeing the agenda now?
Yeah, looks good.
Okay, alright. So this gets us up to our Community Development Department update. And first item on here, item one is, uh, the county is still moving ahead as part of the Route 66 Brownfields EPA grant. Um, and Melissa is with us and she can talk to you about, let, let the commission know where we're at overall with the coalition and what is going on with grants here in our area.
Thank you Jess and Chair Aunt Taveras. The Route 66 Brownfields Coalition Grant is ongoing and those funds will be available for another year, so if um, any of you or any, anyone joining this meeting has, is aware of any properties that may have some issues such as lead-based paint or asbestos and, and a property owner would like to see, to receive some funds for some, an assessment, then that is a grant available through this coalition grant being managed by NACOG. So it's primarily for commercial properties. But if anyone has any, runs into any property owners that have suspected contaminants and they would like assistance in evaluating what those are, that would be a source of funding for that. On the same related topic, just to give you all an update there, the county also just last week submitted a grant to the EPA um, for additional brownfields money to clean up contamination in the old county jail, so um, that was an effort that the facilities department, or the county facilities department um, put together and will learn if that grant application is successful, I believe, in April. So, um, that's that, the brownfields update.
Um, Ms. Short, uh, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Just to clarify, is it, are the funds for assessment? Or are they for assessment and cleanup?
There are different phases. So the initial funds are for assessment. There's phase one and phase two assessments. The first phase one is basically a records research to see if any other reports have been done. Phase two is for a more detailed, um, site assessment where samples are actually taken. And then if there is cleanup necessary, there, there are potentially additional funds available for that through different grants. Um, but the first phase is to determine what is actually in place and, and that is actually, you know, a phase two assessment can run into several thousands of dollars for a property owner, but these grant funds are no match at all by the property owner. It's completely funded by this, this grant opportunity. And it is not an enforcement action. It is something that is really informational and a benefit to a property owner, so they know what they need to do to move forward with any kind of remodel or reuse or renovation of a site. It will also look for underground storage containers.
Okay, thank you. Um, that, that information was helpful.
Thank you, Melissa. Um, Madam Chair, if there's no other questions on the, on item one of the department update? Item two is just, uh, letting the commission know that, that our staff continues to work with the city of Flagstaff on the Flagstaff Regional Plan Update. Uh, we are now complete with the neighborhood meetings. Several of us participated in several of those meetings. And Melissa can, can further expound on, on where we're at with the regional plan update and, and where we see that going in the near future.
Thanks again, Jess and Chair Aunt Taveras and Commissioners. So the several of you, I believe, attended the visioning workshops that have just been concluded with the last one being earlier this month. The next phase of the regional plan update is what's called the scenario planning process. The, uh, there's been a firm that has been contracted um, with, by the city, it's Cascadia Partners, and they will be running the scenario process for the region plan update and that what that will do is it will look at different options for how the future land use map and decisions in terms of policies can be chosen. So that's a process that will go for about another year. Um, but we'll be, we'll keep you informed as far as the schedule workshops and opportunities to participate in those, because there'll be a large effort to include the public in that process. That is just getting started.
Thanks, Melissa. Um, Madam Chair and any of the commissioners, are there any questions on the Flagstaff Regional Plan Update? Okay, it looks like Sot, Commissioner Best raised his hand, so please, Commissioner Best.
Thanks Jess. First of all, I've had some technical issues getting on. Can you guys hear me?
Hearing great.
Okay, great. I have to admit, I only got halfway through this. This is a lot of material. Uh, but it looks great and I look forward to working with it. And I'll just leave it at that at the moment. I guess the biggest issue to me, and I don't saw it a lot of times in this. But not at the level I'd like to see it. And I was very heartened to see Supervisor Horstmann's uh, quarterly report, the last one. Said in bold words, if the rear of the flag drainage burns, and it will burn, Flagstaff will sustain a billion dollars of the damage. And in in, these are my words, it will put Flagstaff out of business. I don't know that the intensity that I feel about this is reflected in what I read. There's a lot of, you know, forest restoration connections in, in what I read. But I'm still not seeing anything on the ground. And I know this is kind of a policy document. But I would love to see it say in bold words, if the rear of the flag drainage burns, it's a billion dollars and it will burn. The question is whether it burns before or after it's thin. So that was the main thing I saw and I look forward to working on this. Lot of great stuff in there. And thank you to Melissa. I know she's got as if this weren't enough, she's got the regional plan going too, so. Lot of work to do. Thanks.
Madam Chair, any other questions on item two of the, of the department update?
Um, Mr. McFeely, I do not have any further questions and I'm not seeing anyone's hands and raise except Commissioner Best. I bet you forgot to put your hand down, right? Or do you have additional comments?
Of course, I always have additional comments, but in this case, you've got none.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Yeah, and with that, Mr. McFeely, go ahead and continue, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, item three is our comprehensive plan implementation report. And really, that's gonna roll right into item four, which, um, as we report on implementation of our vintage 2015 comprehensive plan, we're also gonna update you on initiating uh, the 10-year update to the comprehensive plan. And Melissa um, will be giving that presentation as well. And I believe she has a presentation for us. So Melissa, are you able to share your screen? And if so, um, I will stop sharing.
Okay, yes, I can share. It's like, thank you.
Alright. We see it.
Okay, let me get into presentation mode. Do you see the presentation? Do you see the presentation mode?
Yep, looks great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jess and Commissioners. Um, yes, I'm gonna try to go through this pretty quickly. Um, we are, as you know, we've, we've sent to you and your packet the very long Comprehensive Plan Implementation Report, um, which is focused on how our two thousand fifteen plan is functioning. And just to give you, everybody knows this, but as you know, our two thousand fifteen Comprehensive Plan won a state award. It's a vision for the future, um, for the county. It's got a twenty-year plan with goals and policies to guide land use decisions and direct growth. It also provides a comprehensive reference for community programs for, for the public and private sector initiatives. And as you know, you well know, um, it's essential in guiding land use decisions made by you and also the Board of Supervisors. So this diagram just illustrates that the focus is really land use and growth, growth with these other elements that encircle that main focus of the plan. So it's got a total of eleven elements or chapters, a collection of sixty-six goals, three hundred and eighty-six policies, and then twenty-four action items in an implementation plan. So, um, that is kind of the, the, um, summary of what the plan contains. Just a few more details, um, we must update this plan by state statute every ten years. Implementing the plan is really the responsibility of all county departments and those, the plan then helps us to develop work plans and budgets. Um, the, we will talk a bit about the goals and policies and also the implementation plan and the twenty-four action items. It's important to note that those action items were not prioritized. Um, but the number ten does direct the county to start to identify metrics that could help evaluate progress toward implementing the plan. So just a little bit on metrics then. Um, you know, how do we actually measure progress? Um, so far in these implementation reports, we've talked about programs and initiatives that have addressed goals and policies, which is very informative, and we'll talk about those in a bit. We've also talked about the action items that have been completed and we'll go into some detail on those as well. But to think more about metrics, you know, metrics are actually data, it's figures and statistics that measure results. And what those then usually do, metrics inform an indicator, an indic- indicator you can think of as a needle, is it provides insight into how well we're doing to achieve community values or ultimately our goals. So that's something that we are gonna talk about a little bit more, um, today. So previous reporting years were two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and two thousand, uh, twenty twenty. Um, for those past, um, reporting years, we, um, highlighted for you the department accomplishments and initiative across different departments in the county. Um, again, I mentioned there's an implementation action item that, that, um, is, it directs um, the county to start to identify metrics that would measure success of the policies. And so this year, we've organized this report to follow the planned chapters or the different elements. And then to start to pull out or identify some metrics that may indicate that progress or move it, how to move that needle in the future. And so to kind of highlight for you, um, these are the nine departments that, that participated in this year's report, Community Development, Economic Development, Flood Control District, Forest Restoration Initiative, Health and Human Services, Information Technology, and in particular, the GIS Department, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and the Sheriff's Program. And we may have a few of our department representatives with us today. Um, there are many, many projects and programs that our departments are implementing. And there are far too many to actually, uh, list for you today, but those are detailed in the report that you received. So we'll take a look, um, at each element of the plan and do a very brief summary of how that's being implemented. Um, this chart on the right shows you, and this first topic is Sustainability and Resiliency, which is the first chapter in our Comprehensive Plan. The chart on the right indicates that there, there's one goal in sustainability and resiliency and seventeen policies that are related to that. Um, just to kind of highlight for you what's going on, the Forest Restoration Initiative Program, um, as you know, they are looking at restoring lands. Um, and that ultimately reduces carbon emissions from wildfire impacts, prevents wildfires from occurring. And there are a lot of different benefits to restoring the forest that are highlighted by that program, the program that, that they are running. In Community Development, the Sustainable Building Program is looking at contributing to climate change by providing educational outreach and renewable energy information for the Sustainability Program. They're actually contributing to affordable housing with the pilot program for affordable onsite wastewater. And they're contributing to sustainable water supply. They're developing or have developed a user guide for, uh, rainwater harvesting. Um, our Engineering Division is, uh, working with the Rio de flag Watershed Alliance as a stakeholder that's contributing to efforts to protect, enhance, and make the watershed more resilient. And then they are doing continuous review of the floodplain ordinance. So some potential data and metrics that could be used to measure progress in the future, looking at number of acres of forest restored and treated, educational events, and sustainability and project certifications. These are by no means decided on, but they are just some of the, the in- information that's coming out of the reports from departments that may point to indicators in the future. And then these action items and opportunities come out of our implementation plan as well as policies for additional opportunities to implement in the future, such as, uh, preparing water haulers for drought and developing incentives for water providers to increase water efficiency. So the next topic is natural environment, and you can see we've got six indicator goals, topics ranging from forest land and health, soils, air quality, environmentally sensitive lands, wildlife and vegetation. And of these six goals, there are thirty-nine supporting policies. And, and this topic, Forest Restoration and the Flood Control District are working again to restore acres to create resilient, resilient landscapes. Um, they developed a Cockney County Community Wildfire Defense Program. They're utilizing what's called the air curtain burner, um, to, um, remove waste from forest clearing projects. Parks and Recreation has got a long list of projects that they are implementing, um, including, uh, doing riparian restoration at Heronburg Wash. They, uh, have got, uh, numerous acres of conservation easements. On the former Miller property, they have purchased, um, six acres at Pump House, um, uh, adjacent to Pump House Wetlands to protect the wetlands from, uh, development. Um, and there's, there's a long list of projects that Parks and Recreation is doing to implement these goals and policies of the nat- natural environment. And then, um, our Community Development, Sustainable Building, and Engineering Divisions are doing, um, daily work in implementing our floodplain ordinance and then assisting projects that result in, in reduction of greenhouse gases that are sustainable programs. So, again, thinking about possible metrics that come out of all these programs, we could think about possibly looking again at number of acres of forest that is restored and treated, and then also the number of acres that come under conservation easements. And I'll go through these pretty quickly because I know that we don't have a lot of time for this. Um, the next chapter in our plan i- is Water Resources, and here we have five goals, uh, supported by twenty-three policies. And Forest Restoration Initiative and the Flood Control District and their work, they are contributing, um, by their actually creating partnerships to respond to wildfires and to, um, address post-wildfire flooding. They're working on Bill Williams Mountain and the Repi Project near Mormon Lake um, and Lake Mary to protect critical watersheds from cra- catastrophic wildfires. Parks and Recreation, again, these a lot of times overlap into topics. Their Heronburg Wash Wetland Enhancement Project is restoring the riparian environment, revegetated the channel, treating invasive weeds, and they're doing ongoing monitoring and mace, uh, maintenance of that riparian area. And, uh, Community Development, again, a lot of the different initiatives in Community Development, um, uh, there are a lot of different initiatives going, but a couple to highlight is that the Building Division has pre-approved a hydro loop system, which is, um, a system that can be used for treating gray water and home use. Um, Engineering Division is, um, coordinating with state, federal, and local resource management agencies. And the, um, Engineering Department also provides continuous coordination through Arizona Department of Environmental Quality uh, for the updating our stormwater requirements. So you can see there's a lot of overlap between, uh, elements, um, in terms of what could actually be used to indicate progress toward implementing these goals and policies. The Land Use and Growth Chapter has got eleven goals and sixty-six policies that support those goals. Um, Information Technology and GIS, they are kind of our, um, go-to supporters in terms of keeping all of the data up to date that we need and planning and zoning to make sure we've got accurate information on, um, projects that we work for. So that is, um, just, uh, kudos and hats off to all the hard work that, that our Information Technology Department does, really behind the scenes, but is crucial to providing us with, um, accurate information to present to you on these projects. Um, the Forest Restoration Initiative, um, they are again continuing to work with land managers to protect watersheds and water resources. Economic Development and Forest Restoration are working together to, um, find, to help forest industry partners find property zone parcels, um, in order to support forest restoration industry. Um, and then the Public Works Department is actually daily there coordinating facilities improvement, um, and capital improvement project, projects to make sure that they, those are installed, um, to support different, um, initiatives. And then they work with Community Development to make sure that the traffic studies are, um, accurate and that reflect needed improvements for projects that are being proposed. And then finally, Parks and Recreation, in addition to, um, purchasing six acres at Pump House, pardon me, adjacent to Pub- Pump House Wetlands to protect wetlands from development. They are bringing, um, the sewer line, uh, for the campground sewer project that will come to the border of, uh, Fort Titeo County Park, which then meets the goals of providing infrastructure improvements for the land use, growth, and development chapter. Um, there are some, a lot of potential data metrics that could indicate progress toward land use and growth. These are just a few ideas, um, looking at number of affordable housing units created and then looking at number of acres of ranchland and open space conserved. Some of the additional action items and opportunities that are remaining from the implementation plan would be to develop an environmentally sensitive lands ordinance, support development of local land trusts, um, identify new rural planning areas, and then, um, looking at, um, potentially influencing legislative changes related to lot splits and exchange of state land. In the Community Character Chapter, there are nine goals that are related to topics such as community design, activity centers, tribal lands and interests, historic and cultural resources, heritage areas and landscapes, scenic views, sheds, scenic corridors, dark skies, and natural quiet. And with those, and there are a total of forty-four policies. And our Economic Development Department is working, um, as well to implement these. Um, they have actually, they provide business resources for commercial developments that are looking to locate in the county. And with that, then they're looking to preserve community character by the information that they give. Um, Public Works is they, their engineering department replaced twenty-three old light, light fixtures with LED roadway lighting that, um, replaced the old low-pressure sodium lamps. And then Economic Development, um, um, excuse me, the Community Development Department. Um, we, along with the Planning Commission, um, implement the design review overlay in different area plans where those are adopted, and then developing the utility scale renewable energy ordinance, um, supports community character. So there are some, uh, ideas yet to be developed for what potential data metrics could indicate movement toward community character. But some of the action items that have been, um, that are still available as opportunities would be to, um, amend the zoning norms to adopt the updated lighting, uh, code, which I, we will be working on shortly. Uh, so that's something that is going to be going, moving forward. Another action item would be, um, to consider developing, if it's be beneficial to develop a scenic resource and gateway inventory to develop a no- noise ordinance potentially. And then finally, to seek local government status from the State Historic Preservation Office to, um, begin to evaluate the county's historic resources. In the Economic Development Chapter, there are five major goals and twenty-six policies. The indicator goals, um, are related to economic drivers, emerging trends, um, business growth and sustainability, infrastructure, and coordinating with land uses. The, uh, Forest Rest- Forest Restoration Initiative is working to implement economic development. They, um, they're supporting the Forest Operations Training Center, which was developed by NAU's Ecological Restoration Institute to help train people and operators, um, of forest equipment. So there are some, a lot of hidden, um, initiatives that are going on that will feed into implementing these, these items. Um, the Forest Restoration Initiative and Flood Control District together, um, they're providing, uh, flood mitigation and forest restoration work for non-GO, NGOs, non-governmental organizations. And they're, they employ engineers, hydrologists, machine operators, ri- machine operators, mechanics, and other, um, employees that are actually in high-wage positions. So they are supporting economic development through that program. And then, um, the Forest Restoration Initiative is also working with Economic Development and GIS. They have conducted a rail access plan to evaluate, um, at Camp Navajo, a strategic rail study, um, to identify potential rail infrastructure that might benefit the forest industry. And then they've also developed a forsel- forestry parcel use mapping overlay where they're helping forest industries look for property, property zone land where they could potentially locate. And then they're also, um, they have worked on a forest biomass resolution that increases, that that supports increased forest industry to increase the pace and scale of forest treatment practices. Um, and then Economic Development, this image on the lower right is a preview of the Economic Recovery Dashboard that I believe will be launched at the end of December. And you can see in that, they have actually identified different indicators, um, of economic recovery, such as poverty level, housing price, uh, rent burden, uh, broadband access, standard of living, median income. So this was an information that came to us through this, this year's update, um, where Economic Development is actually jumping way ahead, and they've developed these indicators to, um, identify, um, economic development opportunities within the county. So that's something that I don't believe Chris Pastors is with us right now, but my understanding is this will be live at the end of the year. Um, our Parks, Open Space, Trails, and Recreation Chapter has four primary indicator goal topics, county and neighborhood parks, open space and public lands, trails, recreational, ra- recreation partnerships, and then those are supported by a total of thirty-two policies. And so our Parks and Recreation Department is working on numerous initiatives that support this, this element. Um, I'll go through a few of them. Uh, one of the recent things that they're working on is the Fort Titeo Land Management Plan. It's going to codify, uh, Parks and Recreation Goals for Fort Titeo County Park, emphasizing protecting natural areas from development, maintaining, enhancing wildlife habitat and vegetation communities, and adding interpretive elements. They have a recreational wheels program that deliver recreation opportunities to county residents by coordinating with local partners and fulfilling recreation gaps in the community. The former Miller Property Conservation Easement, again, we've talked about this, but that is eighty acres of forest and open land at Rogers Lake that are protected from development by a conservation easement. We've talked about the six-acre Pump House acquisition, which is adjacent to the wetlands and will protect those from development. There are improvements on Soldier's Trail, five miles of Soldier's Trail were improved, rerouted and expanded. And then, um, there's also O'Neill's Trail, um, which will formalize a social trail adjacent to the wetlands at Pump House. um which will formalize a social trail adjacent to the wetlands at Pump House. Wash. Um, those are just a, that's just a sampling of the programs going on with Parks and Recreation. Our GIS department also supports Parks and Recreation to master plan. They've detailed, developed a detailed spatial data for the recreation spaces, spaces of the county. Um, and they provided, uh, that will also assist with regional part partnerships and expand mapping resources. The Forest Restoration Initiative is protecting environmentally sensitive areas and habitat from they're working to prevent um those areas from catastrophic wildfire and post wildfire flooding. And then Public Works is coordinating with the Navajo Nation Department of Transportation to maintain um school bus routes on the Navajo Nation. So um these again are some ideas, and you can see number, number of trails created or improved as a potential data um metric and indicator, and then again, number of acres under conservation easement. The, there's some opportunity here to use the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan to identify additional opportunities and metrics going forward. Community service, um, there are quite a few departments who are working to implement um community services, and you can see those topics include everything from utility services and corridors to telecommunications systems, solid waste, wastewater, public health, education, with a total of six goals and then twenty uh seven policies. So our um IT and GIS department, department is currently working on broadband initiative that will um look to provide those services to underserved areas. Uh, Park, Public Works supports this uh through their green waste collection station at Willer Springs that helps um property owners to collect green waste and remove it from their properties. Um, the Parks and Recreation Department, again, the campground sewer project will expand sewer utility to the border of Fort Titele. And then the Forest Restoration Initiative and Flood Control District work together um to uh per- to actually improve um solid waste by um removing that with their air curtain burner, and then they are developing a website um with greater Flagstaff Forest Partnership to allow people to have, citizens to have a one-stop shop when there is actually a wildfire in their area, so they get information about that fire and how emergency services can support them. And then finally, Health and Human Services has quite a number of projects going on. They um have developed a strategic plan with five focus areas that will build on a community needs assessment that will build on a community health assessment and a community health improvement plan. And you can see this image on the right, there are six priority areas are transportation, housing, behavior, health, childcare, food security, and income. So these are potential, this is potential information and metrics that Health and Human Services has developed that could be wrapped into um using, that could be used um to understand how the comprehensive plan is also moving forward. Our public safety topic um has six goals, indicator goals that focus on everything from local emergency services, law enforcement, fire protection, wildland and urban interface, floods or, and earthquakes, and then disaster response um with a total of twenty-six policies. And you can see all the different departments that are working um to improve public safety in the county. Um, Public Works, obviously, they help to pre- prepare for flood control and response. And they also do maintenance on Navajo Nation roads that are impacted by flooding. The Flood Control District, um they obviously respond to emergency situations, are also developing modeling that will understand uh long-term impacts and help to um pre- prepare for flood mitigation. Our GIS department is supporting emergency response. Um, and in all of their mapping needs, they also provide addressing services uh to make sure that properties are correctly addressed for nine-one-one responders. And the um one thing to highlight about Forest Restoration Initiative is that they uh removed hazardous, hazardous vegetation on a hundred and thirty-three acres southwest of Flagstaff within the Wuiwui. So that's just one project that they have come recently completed. And then for, just interestingly, to understand how all departments respond during an emergency, Parks and Recreation opened up the uh Fort Titele County Park as well as Peekskill County Park during recent flood and wildfire events to house animals and to provide places for sandbag collection and distribution. And then the um Sheriff's Office and Health and Human Services, again, there's a long list of different programs that are um being implemented by our Sheriff's Office to uh support public safety. Uh, just a, a few, sampling of a few of those. Um, in two thousand twenty-one, patrol deputies were dispatched to about sixty-one thousand calls for service. So that is a lot of activity that our um deputies are responding to. The um they, uh, public, uh, rather, the Sheriff's Department has got a number of community partnerships with local, state, federal, and tribal public safety agencies, and they all work together to create different programs that help with um not only emergency services, but also reentry um from uh people that have been actually incarcerated and moving back into system. And that image on the lower right is Sheriff Driscoll and um Health and Human Services and the Sheriff's Office partnered um on a program to um and I'm looking for the actual name of that, to help people reenter into the system. So this was groundbreaking for that new grant program that was recently awarded. It's Pathways to Community Collaborative Partner, Partnership for Reentry Support. So there's a lot of effort going on um between these different departments to provide not just emergency services, but ongoing support um for the ca- for the community um in numerous ways. Um, so again, you know, just some ideas about potential metrics. We've talked about acres of forest restored uh and treated. Uh, but then potentially reducing the service cost could indicate some community health programs that are actually working to keep people um um out of trouble and um and to minimize the number of calls that the deputies need to respond to. A couple more, just a couple more topics to cut, talk about circulation then is um we've got eight goals and forty-four policies. And circulation is obviously related to roadways, public and private transit, airports and airspace, non-motorized circulation, infrastructure, minimizing environmental impacts, maintaining and improving the system, and then also access management and safety. So our Public Works Department is continually working on maintaining and building roads. Um, just to give you a few highlights, uh, what's happened with our Public Works Department. They graded over nineteen hundred miles of gravel roadways um outside of the Navajo Nation in Cogia County as part of their ongoing maintenance. They've resurfaced um over fifty-eight miles of gravel roadway in Cogia County. Um and they have uh within the Navajo Nation, then they've worked on over two thousand miles of school breast roots um to maintain those roads. Um, they are um I am just looking through the list here. They have um supported ongoing uh capital investment programs by, that were funded by Proposition Four oh three, and as we've talked about before, they review the traffic studies that are provided for all of the um development proposals that community development reviews to make sure that any needed improvements are um installed with development projects. Our GIS department uh compile spatial data that support planners and analysis of transportation systems, um particularly for area plan renewals. Uh, we, we update those area plans with um um as we need to with uh to understand what improvements have been made so that those can get um specifically identified during area plan updates. Um the Public Works Department has a strategic plan with different strategic priority areas that may help to identify future metrics. And then some action items and opportunities are, are things that could be developed in the future as well. And then finally, the last element in our comprehensive plan is the energy element. And here we have four indicator goals, conservation and efficiency, generating energy, uh, wind and solar, um avoiding impacts of generate and energy, and then um looking at the impacts of production with a total of twenty-nine policies that support those. So the sustainable building program, uh, they are um looking to assist people through their certification program to develop um energy-efficient housing and energy-efficient buildings. So that is something that, as we know, is ongoing through that program, and it's been very successful since it's been um implemented. Our Public Works Department has recently installed two, I believe, two EV charging stations um at law enforcement administrative facility and also at the administration building. Both locations can charge four vehicles. And then the Public Works Department is also supporting the Chevlon Butte Wind Farm Project by reviewing the development plans. The Sheriff's Office um has um is actively engaging in conservation and efficiency efforts. They've got a solar panel-covered parking system, they've got reclaimed water for landscaping, and they have a special recycling program for batteries and electronics. Um, and they also participate in the countywide facilities management energy management program. And that's that's a long title for something that they are actively looking at ways to continually improve their energy efficiency. Forest Restoration Initiative and Economic Development is um they are looking at ways to support the biomass industry. And they are um looking to help uh biomass industry find locations within the county where they could operate. Our GIS department has been instrumental in mapping the uh utility scale renewable energy projects into a single database so that we have that information available um uh in one space, in one site, so we can understand cumulative impacts and in general where these are being located. And then um the community development, the engineering department is reviewing alternative energy programs for grading plans and things like that. So a potential data metric that could come for the energy element would be how the county is working to reduce carbon emissions and that potential action items would be determined in the future. And then finally, just to talk about our twenty-four action implementation plan. There are, we li- looked at this and based on three different, um the status in three different ways, um completed items, items that are ongoing or underway, and items that need to be completed. So we've completed four major items, and one of those would be um we um updated the subdivision ordinance. We had a major update to the zoning code ordinance, and then we also recently adopted the utility scale renewable energy ordinance. The ongoing or underway items include things like updating area plans. So those are on, are continuously being worked on. Um, as you know, we've updated the Belmont Area Plan. We're soon to be completing the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan. And the other um action items that are ongoing or underway are actually highlighting a report with these symbols. And then there are some other opportunities to be completed in the future that we've talked about a bit and uh the different elements. So just very quickly, then, this will all lead into updating our comprehensive plan. We will be presenting this report to the board next week on December sixth for their work session, and then the implementation report will be followed by a scoping group workshop to evaluate and start to set expectations for the next comprehensive plan update. And we will then take those scoping workshop results to the board with a proposed schedule process and public participation outlined in early twenty twenty-three. And we are uh looking uh for a target adoption date of an updated plan of twenty twenty-five. And with that, I know I've taken on too long to talk, but I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Oh, Commissioner Best, go ahead.
And trying to remember to lower my hand first. Well, I, I apologize for getting in late. I had some technical issues in my previous comment was really should have been interjected now. Uh, you know, we're doing a lot on forest for restoration initiative, maybe since Supervisor Horseman and the other supervisors and the city council know what's going on. Maybe it's kind of a, above our pay grade, the kind of um energy that needs to go into that. We, we're chipping away at it, but the truth of the matter is, I think acres per year are pretty paltry. Um and that's frustrating. Uh, overall, I think it's fantastic. I, I think, I mean, you said it was an award-winning uh effort and uh from our last update, and it's really impressive to me that we're, we're, uh, we've got such positive well-balanced goals, and we're making so much progress on all of them. I, I do have a couple uh out in the weeds things to ask about. Do we have time for that? Just, just a couple of questions?
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Jess. We certainly have, we, we've got um uh upwards of half an hour here still on your study session agenda time.
Yes, I, yes, I agree. Go ahead, Commissioner Best.
Well, one issue that um that I think is really critical, and boy, if you get the local paper, you read about it virtually every month, is affordable housing. Um, I, and I'm not sure that we have in the county. Uh, so correct me if I'm wrong. Do we have in the county uh the definition of affordable housing that I believe the city uses, which is a permanent uh structure that provides shelter to local residents, it costs no higher than thirty percent of the median income, is affordable housing. Which means that a small, relatively cheap structure that can be bought by somebody in Phoenix for summer home or vacation rental is not affordable housing. Yeah, and I think we had some kind of a definition in the subdivision ordinance. Do we have a definition, and if so, where?
So Madam Chair and, and Melissa and Commissioner's uh Best, um, you, you are correct that uh when we did, when we updated the subdivision ordinance, um, which, which was a, a big, a big check mark, honestly, off of the action items um for the comprehensive plan, uh, the subdivision ordinance did address workforce housing um in giving incentives, uh, uh, among other incentives, but gave the incentive of um in, increased, the potential of increased number of lots um for deed-restricted workforce housing. And we do have a definition within the subdivision ordinance for workforce housing. Um, that is the only place uh really within the documents that, that our department, the Community Development Department, works with, where we have a definition uh for that. Um, and I certainly understand the issues you are bringing up, and I would anticipate with this updated uh comprehensive plan, as we update the comprehensive plan, the affordable hous- housing, workforce housing will be a, a topic and, and probably future, um, you know, give us some good action items for going into the next ten years. But to answer your question, we, the only place a, a definition resides is in the subdivision ordinance.
Jess, Jess, if I could just jump in real quick, the, actually, there is a definition in the comprehensive plan which mirrors what the city's is.
Okay.
Okay. And uh you know, the next question there, and, and I don't know how much you want to put into this, but it's, is do we have a program that would hold an easement or somehow lock up workforce housing so that over time it remains um at a level that is, so that it doesn't cost any more than thirty percent of the median income uh indefinitely. Uh, I, I know that the city has that program, but I don't know what program would be parallel to that in the county.
Commissioner Best, at the count, at this time, the county doesn't have a similar program, but there are different land trusts um and habitat for humanity, for instance, they have their own Um, and habitat for humanity, for instance, they have their own program, but the county doesn't have a similar program that's run by the county.
Okay.
So, and, and again there, when, if you look at the, um, section three point four of the subdivision ordinance, we did create, uh, opportunities for density bonuses permanently restricted for workforce housing in a manner approved by the county. And those were some words that we, that were really crafted over time to give some flexibility. Uh, but the only thing we would foresee if, if someone were to use this density bonus opportunity within subdivision ordinance, it would probably be something in the form of a deed restriction, uh, that we would see placed on lots, um, in order to, uh, to remain workforce housing and, and avoid exactly what you described, you know, it becoming, um, someone's vacation home.
Yeah. And I remember I, I was on that committee. I remember, um, that the goal, I think, was kind of a one stop shopping. You know, if, if a landowner comes to us and wants to do a subdivision and, uh, wants to maybe increase a little density in, in, uh, in exchange for workforce housing. We need, it needs to be easy. If it turns out to be complicated and expensive just to deal with the legality of it, that ain't gonna happen. And so, um, I don't know that it's any easier now than it was three, four years ago when, when we were working on this. So that, that I think that's, that should, in my mind, should be a high goal because I remember a couple of cases, there was one up by page where people have said, yeah, I want to do workforce housing and and we didn't have, you know, we had the ideal. But we didn't have, yeah, go to this office, fill out this paperwork and you're done. And that's what we need in the real world, I think, to get people to take the time to do it. Uh, so, uh, thanks on that and, and hopefully that'll be part of, of the discussion that we're gonna have. Another question I had was that, um, when the Museum of Northern Arizona set aside some land, uh, for, um, open space just within the last year, or maybe the last two years, I think the county ended up holding the easements. And I wonder if that was a breakthrough, if that set a pattern for, um, the retirement of development right, um, transfer development right, uh, process. Uh, have we gotten any farther on that where we just again make it easy to do these things so that when somebody comes forward, we just say, yeah, go to the office, fill out that paperwork and go for it. So is the M, was the M and A, uh, Museum of Northern Arizona, uh, process? Uh, did, did, was that a step forward? Uh, I didn't hear about it except sort of through community conversations.
So, um, Commissioner Best, I, I don't know if Melissa can speak anything on the M and A, um, what amounts to, I believe what you're kind of describing is a conservation easement. Yeah. I remember when, when that took place, the county does not have a formalized TDR transfer development rights program. Um, again, about the only, the closest thing we have is being able to do a cluster conservation subdivision in which you're conserving land, you know, with an attract as part of your subdivision. Um, so for that project, off the top of my head, I, I, um, don't know if, if there was any transfer development rights to property within the city, uh, or not, but, um, I'm not aware of, of any impact that had in the county. That's been a couple of years ago and I remember it's pretty fuzzy on that one.
You were probably working for somebody else at that time.
Possibly.
Um, well, I, I'll ask you around because uh, my, my understanding was that the county holds the C easement. So I, I, I know the people who put that together. And, uh, interesting. Now I'll check it out. Uh, yeah, that's all I've got at the moment. Again, uh, really impressive. It's just fun to be working, uh, working in a process. It seems so logical and inspirational. And, uh, nobody's fighting about politics. We're just getting, getting the job done. It's really great. I enjoy it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Michelle, this is Chair Antivarius. I don't see any other hands raised, so I'm, I'm guessing there's no more questions on this. On, did you complete item number four under community development department update? Probably with, with your presentation.
I uh, Chair Antivarius, I, I think that we did, because the last item, Jess, if I recall, is, um, discussing the comprehensive plan update.
Mm-hmm. And Melissa, if you wanted to share that last slide again.
Okay.
Uh, and then emphasize, yeah, that, um, of the process we see at this point in time, um, which, you know, which will be fluid and will continue to evolve with, with good input. Um, and the, the scoping concept and having a scoping group and scoping workshop, um, the what, you know, the process will continue to include updates during study sessions to the P and Z commission. So if you want to share.
I will. I'm getting right back to that. Hang on a second.
Yeah. Show the commissioners that slide and we can let them know those things.
And I realize, I realize now I rushed through the presentation because I was thinking we were short on time. But so this is the, um, again, our very, very.
Michelle, this is Chair Antivarius. I'm not seeing anything.
Yeah, we're, we're not. Melissa, I think you still need to share your screen.
Oh, I didn't click share. There we go.
There we go. Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you for saying, for pointing that out. Um, so this is our very, very basic, um, path forward to update the comprehensive plan and, um, again, we will be bringing this implementation report to the board next Tuesday on December sixth and I believe that work session begins at, is it one o'clock Jess or is it one fifteen?
One fifteen.
One fifteen.
One fifteen is what it's scheduled for.
So next Tuesday, um, and we'll be looking for feedback from the board as well. And we will try to update them with the feedback we got from you today. So we can continuously carry that information forward. And then after that, we, we are working right now to put together, um, an agenda and a, um, invitation for a scoping group workshop. And the intention of that is to bring together, um, other agencies, uh, county residents, planning commissioners, um, and other staff, uh, uh, county departments who are very familiar with and who, who use the comprehensive plan to, um, look at it, our existing comprehensive plan and figure out what's good, what needs to maybe be changed to really, um, evaluate the current plan um, from a user point of view. And with that, then also look at what needs to be revised going forward for the update to set some expectations, but also to set a scope for the next update, uh, or our, we're calling it the update twenty forty-five for the comprehensive plan going forward. And then that will be in January of twenty twenty-three. And then we'll take those results to, to you and to the board of supervisors with a draft, um, schedule for the update, um, a process and the required public participation plan. And we're looking at doing that in, in, uh, the spring, early spring of twenty twenty-three. And then once that process is underway, we are looking at having the, an updated plan prepared for adoption in twenty twenty-five. Uh, one thing to note, this is obviously coinciding with the regional plan update. So we will be looking for ideas on how to make it, uh, distinct, even some, um, ideas for a different type of branding or image to make sure that we, we do keep it a unique process um, apart from the regional plan update so that we can keep focused on both projects, but realizing that they are unique, although they do complement each other. So that is our, again, this is a very brief outline of the plan going forward. Are there any questions or thoughts or comments on this? On this format or this proposed, um, path?
Uh, Michelle, I think at this time there's no input or up. Commissioner Bels, go ahead.
I'll throw out one more idea since we have an extra minute here. Um, there are a number of items here that, um, relate to the negative of the plant world, the invasive weeds and the mitigation thereof, and the positive of the plant wor- world, which is forest restoration and trying to get the forest healthy. Uh, and um, a, a group of us in the conservation study forum had proposed, uh, oh, uh, over a year ago that the city and county go in on a joint position, uh, parallel to what we have now with dark skies. Uh, to bring on a, a plant ecologist would be one way to, to, to title it. A person who would coordinate across jurisdictions because obviously plants, uh, both positive and negative, both the weeds and the ones that we want to keep, um, don't recognize our jurisdictions. And so I'd like to throw that idea out, out there. Um, we have a weed management area program that, uh, is kind of lying foul because there's nobody to run it and there's nobody to maintain the, uh, important records that it keeps in the sense that trying to keep track of what, uh, invasive weeds are where and which ones should we go after because they're about to break out. And so I just hope, uh, maybe as we, uh, work with the city on the regional plan and we're working on the comprehensive plan, that that I, I think that's a good idea and it could move forward to, to have the city and the county jointly find a position that would try to cross jurisdictions and have a, a, a landscape scale look at what's happening in the plant world parallel to what game and fish does. I mean, if you, if you have game and fish, any question about any animal, you know, you know, that's where to go in any jurisdiction. And we don't have that with plants. Uh, we've got city people and county people and, uh, national park people. Uh, a lot of people doing great work, but the coordination, in my opinion, is not there. And so that's an I just, idea just to throw out and thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. On Miss Shaw, I'm not seeing anybody else's hand raised. So Mr. McNeely, why don't we go ahead and move to the board of supervisors update?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I will point out in follow-up to Melissa's presentation there. Um, the, the two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan had twenty-four specific action items. Um, it, it's, uh, within the action item, the implementation section of the comprehensive plan. Um, of those twenty-four items, uh, the county and you all as commissioners, uh, and many other partners have, have really have completed many of those action items. I'm looking right now at the one Commissioner Best was just talking about. Um, and I, and I think that, you know, that can be one for a, a future implementation action item in, uh, in the updated comprehensive plan. I would point out that, um, the county has created a forest restoration initiative and created position for that. Um, that does some, uh, a lot of coordination with multiple jurisdictions, including the Forest Service. So, um, I could, I could easily see where Commissioner's, Commissioner Best's idea of a, of a plant community liaison uh, could possibly fall within, um, uh, within that office. Um, because there's a lot of parallels there with forest health, forest restoration initiative. And, uh, and what that, what that, um, office is already doing. Um, I will point out also of those action items, one of the action items was to create a staff position uh, to ensure implementation of the plan and develop educational programs and materials for you all, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the board and the public. Um, and essentially to be our long range planner. And I'll point out that that action item was followed through on early on and it was, and it was a long range planning position that was, that was created and then filled by, by Miss Shaw. Um, and then many of these other action items have been followed through on significant updates to the zoning ordinance that have been very useful um, as implementation of the comprehensive plan, significant, um, other actions would include, uh, update, a comprehensive update to the subdivision ordinance that also really implements the comprehensive plan. Um, it continuing to update the, uh, the area plans, creation of renewable energy ordinance or of a utility scale renewable energy ordinance. I would just point out that the, that the county and you all as, as, um, very hardworking partners as commissioners, um, and much of our staff and, and much of these efforts led by, uh, by Melissa, by Miss Shaw. Uh, the county has a lot to celebrate here and what we've achieved with the, um, with the last, uh, comprehensive plan. And as we go to update this one, I believe, looking at where we've been, what we've accomplished, the things we have set out to do and have accomplished are gonna help guide us into what, what are our new issues. Some of those issues are being brought up in this discussion. And what can this, um, what can this comprehensive plan, uh, this update to the comprehensive plan achieve for the community? So I just wanted to point that out, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you for that, Mr. McNeely. Uh, good information.
The only other item, um, while there's two items left on our study session, um, agenda, Chair Antivarius, and the first one or the next one would be a board of supervisors update. We just wanted to let you know on their schedule, um, zone change, CC twenty-two eleven, that was the under canvas employee housing zone change. Um, and the update to the Donnie Park area plan, uh, Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood area plan. Those, both of those items will go to public hearing at the board of supervisors on December thirteenth. Um, so you all have given recommendations on both of those items. Your recommendation is being forwarded to the board of supervisors on December thirteenth. Um, the only other item currently scheduled for the board is subdivision case SUB twenty-two thirty-seven. That would be the ranch at the peaks change of conditions. Um, so your recommendation on that item will be going to the board of supervisors for a public hearing on December twentieth. Any questions from any commissioners on the next items going to the board of supervisors?
I'm not seeing any, Mr. McNeely. Um, so that takes us to commission and staff roundtable.
Yes.
I've actually got a question. I'm wondering, do we know yet when the, uh, new districting maps are going to take effect?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That, that's a very question. Um, and Melissa, feel free to jump in as, as, um, Miss Shaw has been very involved with that process as well. I believe that becomes effective with the new year in twenty-four. Am I correct on that, Melissa?
The, I, I'm muted now. Sorry. The, um, I thought, and I can go back and look, it was twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Uh, we need to double check on that though.
Right. It's tied to the election that'll take place, um, in November of twenty-four and then become effective, um, in twenty-five.
Right, in January.
The logic we understood. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And the only other question I have, I was just wondering if there has been any um, movement on the possibility of getting some additional P and C commission appointments, commissioner appointments.
Madam Chair, that's, uh, at the top of, um, of my concerns as it is, uh, for Jake Christman, our director as well. So, um, the board members who have open seats and actually all the board members have, have been reminded of what, uh, in which districts we have open seats and that we are barely hanging on here. Um, with enough commissioners appointed to make a, uh, in, in filling seats to make a quorum. So the board members are aware, um, we are one big team and one big community. So I would encourage the commissioners as well to continue petitioning, um, your appointing board members and letting the, reminding the, the board supervisors that we have some open seats that we need to fill so that we are not at a risk of that we have some open seats that we need to fill so that we are not at a risk of of losing a quorum for these meetings and being able to make important decisions and do the county's business.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McNeely. I was hoping for the news because like you, it is a concern. We are just one person away from not being able to function as a commission. So I was really hopeful that we were going to get some news like, hey, we've got some appointments coming down the line. But it doesn't sound like that's what's happening.
We've identified several.
That spammer, it needs to be removed.
Okay, somebody did that for me. Thanks.
Yes, thank you for, thank you. I'm not sure who did the removal, but thank you for doing that because it is a disruption to the meeting is completely inappropriate. So when that happens, I appreciate that, that action. Anyway, so I guess I'm just echoing your concerns, Mr. McNeely, that it is really important that we, you know, hopefully get some new appointments to the commission, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I've got. So.
It looks like we have, Paul Garns wants to address something that we discussed last meeting.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so go ahead, Madam Chair. I think our attorney's office, the county attorney's office representative is Paul Garns with us this evening. We don't have Aaron with us. He is ill. So if you wanted to recognize Paul Garns from the attorney's office, he has something that he wanted to add.
Yes, Mr. Garns, please go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am so sorry, but Madam Chair, that is just muscle memory from my days in court. I apologize for that, Madam Chair.
No worries, no worries.
I just wanted to follow up on this issue regarding the voting on of minutes. And I've done some research and I told Jess earlier that I believe it was Commissioner Commissioner Clifford who consulted Robert's Rules of Order at the last meeting, and he was exactly right that a commissioner who was not at a meeting is still able to vote to approve the minutes of that meeting. And here's why. If you'll just indulge me, just to give a quick explanation. In voting to approve minutes, the commission is not expressing their confidence in the, I'm sorry, they're not making a personal eyewitness statement saying, you know, we were all there. You're expressing your confidence in the veracity of the secretary, the actions of your colleagues and the correctness of the minutes preparation process. So the, the answer here is that Vice Chair Burton is under no obligation to recuse herself or abstain from voting to approve the minutes. In fact, as legal, my legal advice would be that especially due to the small number of commissioners we currently have. My advice would be that she does actually vote in that approval of minutes. Because once again, she is not making a statement saying that I was there and I saw this happen. She would simply just be making a statement of saying, I trust the process. I'm confident that what happened at that meeting is reflected in the minutes. So that's all I really have there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. This is Chair Antiveras. Thank you for that, Mr. Garns. That is really helpful because it looked like last month that we were headed to to a, to never being able to approve the minutes. So based upon legal counsel, I feel comfortable moving forward. Mr. Our Commissioner Ruggles, I see your hand raised.
Yes, just one thing relative to that. Will the approval of the minutes by the commission require a separate motion for each set of minutes? Motion and second and a vote as opposed to making a motion to approve all of those minutes, getting a second and then voting on them as a whole?
I'm, do you mean minutes from different meetings, Commissioner Ruggles?
That is correct, since we have, I believe, three meetings for which we need approval of the minutes.
It would probably be best to go through each each meeting and approve them individually.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garns. Did any of the other commissioners or staff or anybody have anything else at commission and staff roundtable? Okay, I'm not seeing any. My clock shows 5:24. Why don't we take about a five minute break and we will start the meeting promptly at 5:30?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveras. Are you prepared on your end to begin the meeting?
Madam Chair, yeah, this is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff. And yes, we are prepared to.
All right, it is 5:30. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to begin by reading the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the November 30th, 2022 meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the information, with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. And thank you all for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. If everyone could please stand and Mr. McNeely, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, Madam Chair, and thank you, Zach, for getting a flag up there. If you all could please join me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. There are three separate minutes that we need to approve tonight. So we're going to need a motion and a second on each one. We've got, let's go ahead and begin with August 31st, 2022. If there are no changes or modifications, I will go ahead and accept a motion in a second, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from August 31st, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Burton and a second by Commissioner Clifford for approval of the August 31st, 2022 minutes. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveras. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. Let's do the October 26th, 2022 minutes. If there are no modifications or corrections, I'll accept a motion in a second, please.
I will move to approve the minutes for the October 26th, 2022 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Vice Chair Burton to approve the minutes of October 26th, 2022. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams? Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best? And this is Chair Antiveras. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. And the final approval of minutes will be those from November 9th, 2022. If no modifications or corrections, I'll accept a motion in a second, please.
We approved the minutes of October 9th, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Williams to.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
November 9th, not October 9th.
Oh, did I say October?
Yes. Commissioner Williams said October, so if we could change.
Okay, second again.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Williams to approve the minutes of November 9th, 2022 and a second by Commissioner Ruggles. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
And this is Chair Antiveras. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The first item on our public hearing agenda is case number CUP 22083.
Thank you, Madam Chair. CUP 2283 is being managed by Bob Short, our principal planner. I see he's already sharing his screen. So Bob, go ahead and give your presentation.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Can everyone hear me and see my screen?
We see it fine, Bob, but we are seeing, we're not seeing it in full presentation mode.
Okay. Let me try that again, then we'll see.
You should be able to go to display settings at the top and swap displays.
Okay. Doesn't seem to want to go to the top. Sorry about that. I think I see what's there, but oh. How about now?
No, still, yeah, it's still, still need to swap display settings.
Sorry about that. I cannot understand what is going on. Close this down and start over. Close this down and start over. For some reason, it doesn't show the other side. I'm not sure what that's about. Oh, I don't notice. Never mind. Is it showing now?
It's not, not seeing your screen share yet.
One sec.
I can see your cursor, and you just need to swap the displays at the top when you share it.
Okay.
Couldn't see your cursor before.
Yeah.
It's sharing now.
There you go.
All right, good, there we go. All right, sorry about that.
We're there.
Yeah. It happens when you have an extra screen up. I had my laptop open, that was causing it. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is the Boards and Beams Forest Products Processing, that's CUP 22083. And in this case, the property owner's Kenneth Staley Trust. The applicant, a Flagstaff applicant, is Kenneth Staley, a Flagstaff. The zoning is general, 10-acre minimum parcel size, and the size of the property is 9.76 acres. The request in this case is a conditional use permit for forest products processing, and that's a large category that can, that basically contains all of these things. A lumber and firewood processing and sales, a lumber mill, sawmill, a firewood splitter, chainsaw use, and log truck deliveries. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property is in Red Lake. This CG 10,000 zone here is the store, I don't remember what it's called, but it's in the north part of Red Lake. It's the northern store. And this is Buck Mountain Road. This is the subject property right there. This is an arrow of photos showing the subject property. It comes up off of Red Fox Lane, which is a private easement. And this is a building on the property, use for personal uses, and over here, as you can see, the area where the forest products processing takes place. This is a site plan showing basically the same thing. The sawmill or the saw is located right here, and this is where the wood splitter, the firewood splitter is located. So in this case, this, this application's a result of a complaint for commercial operation of a woodcutting business without a permit. And some of the issues that were brought up with that complaint are noise from the sawmill, the firewood splitter, chainsaws, and log trucks. And this is a photograph showing the sawmill. This is the saw right here. And basically, they bring in full-size logs, and then they cut them up and turn them into lumber like this. There is a, some kind of muffling system on there, so it is quieter than you would expect. And the applicant has told me that there's other things that I believe that actually, there's, there's a new kind of conveyor belt that would also help the sound from the firewood splitter that you can see here. So the leftover pieces, when they cut the edges off of the wood, are fed into this firewood splitter. There's a little saw in there that cuts them into pieces, and then there's also a splitter that kicks them out and up this, up this conveyor belt. So when staff visited the site, we found that the basic of the highest noise reading we found was at the property line right next to the, the sawmill. And that was 78 dB, or 78 decibels. That is considered to be a very loud sound. The zoning ordinance requires a noise level of 50 dB in several places in many of the different uses throughout. The zoning ordinance and staff believes that's also a good standard to judge this use. So this is the applicant's proposal for mitigating the noise. A firewood processor, and I'm assuming this has something to do with the muffling of the sound on that, on the on this sawmill. He's also proposing a 16-foot-tall, 20-foot-long noise barrier installed just west of the processor, and also a roof over the sawmill. He's also proposing to install sidewalls added on the west and south sides to achieve a noise level below 50 dB at any property line. Let me go back to the, to the site plan real quickly. So we're talking about over here would be along this property line, and this property line is not real specific what the applicant intends on doing. So I've written a condition that would cover pretty much anything, but this would be around the sawmill, a roof over it, a large wall on this side of it, and then other walls around this side to deflect the noise. So these, this, these are the two, probably the two main conditions I'd like to look at. Condition two, I'll just read the entire condition. It says, "Within six months of approval or by May 30th, 2022, the applicant shall complete construction of the screening walls described in the project description and verify the noise level has been reduced to 50 decibels or less at all property lines. Staff shall inspect the site and verify the sound levels. If these mitigation measures do not result in a noise level of 50 decibels or less at all property lines, additional measures shall be taken by the applicant and may include completely enclosing the sawmill and the firewood splitter. A building permit shall be obtained if applicable." And I also wanted to change this last sentence because I spoke to the complaining party and, you know, yesterday or day before, and they indicated one of the biggest issues that they had was, was sound from chainsaws. So I wanted to change this one, this one to say chainsaw use shall not result in noise levels greater than 50 decibels at the property line, rather than just be limited to the greatest extent possible. This is a commercial use. It would generate a lot more chainsaw use than like your normal residential use. I mean, I use chainsaws on my property, a lot of people do that. But as a commercial use, there would be a lot more chainsaw use, so I wanted to include that in that 50-decibel requirement. And then the other one, and these are like noise mitigations conditions. It says log delivery trucks shall not visit this site more than twice a month on average per calendar year, and shall only use the access easement on Red Fox Lane unless the applicant provides documentation of legal access from the road located at the southwest corner of the property. So the applicant's indicated that there are only about a dozen logged, you know, log deliveries in a year, about once a month. So I indicated that I, I believe that twice a month would be an adequate amount of log deliveries in case something happens, you know, that requires more than that. And in this map, I wanted to kind of show you the situation out here. Commissioner Best had asked us to look at this, and it's something that we normally look at anyway, but as I looked at this, Red Fox Lane is actually, it's a private access easement that serves these four properties. So these four properties were split back in, I believe it was about 1993. And whenever properties are split like that, this is a typical way of creating access to the properties. So this 30-foot-wide easement and 25-foot radius cul-de-sac right here at the end of it, so that everyone gets access. And, but what the applicant does at this point is that the log trucks, and I believe also people who come to buy firewood or different things, kind of visit the site for different reasons. They come down Buck Mountain Road, they go up Red Fox Lane into the property and circulate back through this way and come back, back out on this road. That's, you know, keeps the log trucks from having to turn around. But the applicant has not been able to show me that they have legal access to this road. In fact, it appears the complaining party actually lives right here, and the complaining party indicated that this is an access easement that only provides access to this property back here. And that, that would appear to be something that would be normal. So if the applicant can't provide evidence or actually the documentation that they have legal access to this road, then they could not use this road for any purposes related to the business, actually any purposes at all. This is their legal access. This is not an access that they have. Although, as you can see, they have kind of crossed over this property here, and the gate is like right there. In terms of citizen participation, the applicant actually held two neighborhood meetings on the site on February 5th and 19th of 2022. Four neighbors attended the meeting, and issues included noise from the operation, the number of trucks visiting the site, and also impacts to property values. The applicant recently did, did provide nine letters of support signed by neighbors. And today, we did also receive one additional letter of support. And then that was emailed to you. Hopefully, you, you got that. I can pull it up for you if you weren't able to look at that today. It was pretty late. Supporters indicate that the business provides firewood and lumber to the area and that the business doesn't have adverse impacts on the area. We have received two letters from neighbors opposed to the project, and those received yesterday and provided to the commission. And I wanted to show you where they, basically where they live. This would be the original reporting party on the complaint, and then this is the location. My understanding is of the other neighbor who was opposed to the project. These are the findings for conditional use permit. And I wanted to look at staff analysis. As the commission knows, forest products processing, it provides an important service by providing the use for timber from forest thinning, and of course, forest thinning reduces the risk of forest fires. It's a huge problem here. The forest, forest, the Forest Initiative is, is working on forest thinning, so it's, it's good to have a use for those products, of course. This is supported by the Conference of Plan. The applicant does, has provided a proposal that should reduce noise levels on the site. And with appropriate mitigation, this forest products processing business meets the findings of fact for a conditional use permit that I showed above. And with that, staff recommends approval of CP 22083 with the recommended conditions. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I just wanted to draw your attention to condition number two, that when, I think we, we just need to change the 2022 to 2023. It, this happens at this time of year. You know, those dates. So I just.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
So when we get, so moving forward, we'll need to address that. On the other kind of comment, and I, I just, I'd just like to collect your thoughts. I did read the applicant's narrative of this, and in there, it states that his hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I don't see that condition listed in the conditions that you have put out. I think it would be prudent to have it in there. What are your thoughts?
Let me pull up this staff report because I thought that the first, the first condition normally addresses that. Let me, let me look and make sure, though.
I didn't see that either, and that was another thing I wanted to address when we started chatting on a commission level, because I'm not, I'm not completely encouraged by the Saturday operation.
Right.
Okay, and this, and this probably. Yeah, it's listed, it, he, the applicant talks about it in his narrative. On but I just didn't see an actual condition, and I, again, I thought it might be prudent. Clearly now, you know, Vice Chair Burton has picked up on that, so that can be something that comes up in commission discussion. And I've only bought. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, let me interrupt. Madam Chair, it's typical in these kind of cases that the first condition points back to the description or the narrative instead of trying to, you know, relay everything in the narrative into the conditions. So what it says is the facilities and forest products processing use are approved as shown on the site plan and described in the project description.
Okay.
So that's how you point back to it, rather than trying to put everything from the narrative or project description into the conditions.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification, Mr. Short. And the only other question that I've got for you, I'd just like to get your thoughts on something. This is on condition number two. And it talks about staff shall inspect the site and verify the sound levels. If these mitigation measures do not result in a noise level of 50 dB or less at all property lines, additional measures shall be taken by the applicant and may include completely enclosing the sawmill and firewood splitter. Now, hopefully, all of the mitigation measures that are going to be done by the applicant are going to work. If they don't, though, what do you feel would be a reasonable time? Like, you've put a six-month time period on the first condition. What do you feel would be a reasonable time period if additional mitigation measures were required?
Madam Chair, that's, that's a good point. I kind of, in some ways, expected the applicant, let's see, what does it say? Because it, it says six months or less, I believe. Now, I guess it, within six months, okay. That could be up until the commission, maybe three additional months.
Okay, okay, and that's something that also can come up at commission discussion. I just wanted your thoughts on what you thought might be, you know, reasonable to allow additional measures to be taken. So, all right, we can pick that up at commission discussion. Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had asked at the work session about easements. Clearly, there, clearly, there isn't a public easement here to access that property on Red Fox Lane. But my question is, does it make any difference that this is commercial as opposed to residential? And we do have a opposition from the Garlington's on whose property the easement rests. Did, did, I wonder if council did any research? We kind of assume that an easement, it seems like in general in P&amp;Z proceedings, we, we assume that an easement is an easement. Proceedings, we in, we assume that an easement is an easement. Is that correct? There's a great deal of difference between an easement that allows someone to drive through the property to get to a residence. And to get to a business, clearly. So. Just asking the question, do we know that this easement is appropriate for commercial use?
Uh, Commissioner Best, yeah, I would certainly defer to the attorney if uh, if they can add to this, but uh. What we've what we've typically seen with easements is that they don't really address that. They don't really address it either way. Then they normally don't say uh, the easement is only for residential uses. Or the easement may be used for commercial uses. They just, in this case, the easement that that I found. Indicated that it was an access easement, thirty feet wide. And that's typically what you see like on uh, when you do a land split. This case is a, this is a land split. Where they split approximately forty acres into. Four tens, actually, they're all they're all, I think, a little less than ten. Uh, there was an administrative adjustment at the time that legitimized them at the current size. But uh, that is uh, that's typically how we've seen it. It doesn't really say, you know, that you can't do commercial uses. It doesn't really say you have to use, it has to be for residential use. So uh, that I guess been staff's position. And I definitely welcome anyone else's comments on this, um, such as the attorney or. Possibly Mr. McNeely.
The the other question would be who's going to maintain the road, which now is going from. Light residential use and with this project goes to. Fairly heavy use, not a lot of trucks, but it could be a fair, definitely more than residential.
That was going to be my question as well. Is it a private maintained road or is it county and? How should maintenance costs be shared based on that?
Yeah, that is a in a. Commissioner Best and Commissioner Burton, that. That is, uh, it is a private road privately maintained. So that's definitely something that we could address. We could certainly add. Uh, condition to that, condition to address that.
And uh, Madam Chair. I wouldn't have anything to add from the legal perspective, other than to concur with Mr. Short. That whether it is public use or private use. The easement is an an access easement. Um, and it it really doesn't delineate between those two, public or private. Um, so I I would just concur with Mr. Short's analysis there.
Um, thank you, Mr. Garns. This is Chair Antiveras. So. It has been stated that this road is a private road. And that so my question is, does this commission have the authority to on? To do road sharing costs, giving, you know, possibly giving the applicant a higher burden. Or is that a private matter that does not, that this commission has no authority over?
Madam Chair, I have a. I've seen I've I've seen that requirement before. I'm not sure if I I've seen it here before, but I have seen it at other jurisdictions where I've worked. Where we did um, have a requirement that the applicant had to. Yeah, I I it it is something that might be difficult to quantify. So it's something it's something we can think about, whether we'd like to add something like that or not. Or the commission would like to add something, possibly the the uh, the applicant shall. Uh, you know, add to the maintenance of the road if it's determined that the log trucks, you know, create more issues. It looks like. If the log trucks only come about once a month, that probably isn't going to be a super significant. Amount of maintenance. But um, the advocate should be able to speak to what kind of maintenance occurs now and who takes care of that now. It's the roads in very good condition. Certainly, it's in good condition.
Okay, and um. But I'm still wondering if this commission has the legal authority to. Um, say what can and cannot be done on a private road. And that that go, I think that would go to council.
Yes. And. Offhand, I. Uh, the the short answer, Chair Antiveras is some, that's something that I would have to look into. I'm sorry that I don't have a an answer right off the top of my head on that. Um, as to whether the commission could. Impose those types of. Strikers on on a privately maintained uh, maintained road. There there could be a provision for it. But I would have to take a closer look.
Okay, so since you cannot definitively say. I as a I as a commissioner would be uncomfortable. You know, saying, hey, we we've got this authority. Let's just go ahead and do it. So how do you propose we move forward with that?
Uh, Madam Chair, I can't make a comment on that, actually.
Okay, please do.
Uh, you'll note that whenever we whenever we we bring a campground to you. That the requirement for the campground is that. They uh, create a road or that. Uh, would support the forty-two thousand pound fire trucks, public safety vehicles. So that is an example right there of when the commission has had that requirement. And those are on private roads. Those are not obviously on county maintained roads. Uh, because that that would be part of the waiver process for that. So it certainly has been done before. This is a road that is used by the public to come to the site and to buy, you know, firewood lumber to. Do different things. So that certainly is something that we have done before.
The Madam Chair and and Bob, uh, this is Jess McNeely, Jess McNeely with staff and Bob, thank you for bringing that up. I was I was thinking the exact same thing. We um, we codified that in the zoning ordinance when we got to great detail. With the commercial campgrounds that could be approved with conditional use permit in the G-zone. Uh, for this exact reason, that there really was a public life, health, safety issue with um, the commercial. Development ensuring that fire emergency services vehicles could get to the site. Um, we have had, we've had similar home occupation or cottage industry. Um, requirements on other CUPs uh, in history with the county. Where some form of performance standard is put on the the commercial property owner. That um, in the case of privately maintained roads, private easements such as this. That the impact of the commercial operation on that private road. The uh, be ma- that it be maintained by the by the commercial operator. Kind of hard to quantify, uh, difficult to quantify, but um. Uh, certainly has been a requirement that has been put on similar conditional use permits in the past.
Okay, okay. Thank you on for that, everyone. And this will also be something that will no doubt come up at commission uh, discussion. Uh, Commissioner Best, your hand is raised still.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask about uh, the view sheds here. From what I can see, just uh, I I have not been out to the property, but from what I can see on the maps, it's sufficiently treated so that. Views are not an issue. And that's a question. We've got noise issues, we've got traffic issues. Do we have any view issues from residences to this property?
Uh, Commissioner Best, you get you're corrected. It is heavily treated. When I was on the site. Uh, you could, I mean, it was completely surrounded by trees. Nothing else was visible. From the site itself out, which means that the site wouldn't be visible either.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, um, do any other commissioners have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, not seeing any hands raised or anyone unmuted. I'm going to ask if the applicant. Or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening? Mr. Short, is the applicant with us this evening?
I understood the applicant was with us. Let me make sure.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Okay, okay, you're under Zoom user. Okay, what I would like you to do is to state your name and address for the record, please. And I would also like to ask you if you have read, if you received and read the staff report. And if you agree with the conditions it contains.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I have read the staff report and uh, agree on. Those items that Mr. Short and I have discussed to be completed in a timely fashion.
Okay, and would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Kenneth Robert Stanley. My physical address at that site is ninety-one oh two North Red Fox Lane. I also have a home and flagstaff. My legal address over here is ninety-eight seventy-one North Bryant Road.
Okay, thank you. Um, do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time?
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, please go ahead.
Yeah, one thing uh, that uh. I would like to know about your uh, firewood processor. When I visited the site with staff, I was kind of remiss in taking a close look at it while while it was operating. Um, I've looked at some of the really basic ones out there and some of the basic ones that uh, for basically home use. Uh, will utilize a chainsaw to cut the wood into the lengths that you uh, want to split. Um, but I don't recall anything like that with the one you're using. Uh, is that the case?
We cut. Logs that are bigger than sixteen inches in diameter. On weekly occasions, meaning a day at a time or two days at a time, that don't fit in the processor.
Okay, so that that would be uh, you'd be using a chainsaw uh, when you do that. Is that correct? Because I I know that there were some complaints about chainsaw noise. So I just kind of wanted to pin down how much chainsaw use and what it was being used for. As we go forward here.
I talked about the. James Robinson, Robinson, when I had my local meetings and there was a case when I had an individual working for me that. He had a chainsaw that was. Muffler mufflerless and did made a lot of noise and he was not there for a few days. And it won't happen again. And the chainsaws are used uh, intermittently during the week for. Maybe an hour or two hours or half a day here or half a day there, but not for a long period of time.
It's not a continuous part of the operation and not necessarily an integral part of the operation of your uh. Uh, firewood processor, is that correct?
Yes, we do not use the, we have to split that by hand. Yes, it's not part of the processor.
Okay, well, thanks for answering my question. Thank you.
Yes, sir, and. To change the subject, you were there when I had the processor. Since then, I have followed up with the manufacturer. And they neglected to send me an update that would quiet it down. And make a big difference on the noise level of the exterior. Oh, the belt going out to the conveyor belt. And it has tremendously reduced the the noise level. And I was really disappointed with them that I had to ask for that without them sending to me. So since then, the processor has been retrofit to eliminate a tremendous amount of noise.
Okay, well, thank you for the additional information. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, do any of the other commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time? All right, I am not seeing any. So I'm going to open it to um, the public. If anyone in the public wishes to address the commission, please raise your hand or unmute. And I will call on you. Uh, Mr. Stanley, could I please ask you to mute again?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and I do see that Mr. Garns has unmuted. Mr. Garns, do you have some counsel at this time?
I do, Your Honor. It was just a follow-up to your previous question. Um, I did some quick research here and can. In the zoning ordinance. It states that conditions prescribed by the commission may include, but shall not be limited to. Um, an impertinent pertinent part, the the following here. Required street dedications and improvements, regulation of points of vehicular ingress and egress. Regulation of traffic circulation, access from public rights of way. Um, requirements for public safety and emergency services. Um, so what what your question addressed. Um, in in my opinion, clearly falls. In those conditions that the commission can prescribe here in this uh. Conditional use permit process. So I can say with some confidence that uh. The commission would be on um, good ground in requiring the road to be uh, maintained.
Okay, thank you. That is that is helpful information. I appreciate that. Um, moving, okay, moving to the public. I do see a Nordstrom hand raised. Okay, please state your name and address for the record. And Mr. McNeely, I am going to ask you to please time for three minutes. And give a one-minute warning, please. And with that, Ms. Nordstrom, please proceed.
My name is Julie Nordstrom. My physical address is one seven two three one North Fifty-Ninth Place, Scottsdale, Arizona. I am a re- um, an owner of property over um, just north of this property in Chaparral Heights. Um, a couple of things I wanted to note. The speaker's presentation talked about how he, when he has his own. Um, saw in his own property. I hate to say it, that's not going to be the same size as what we're discussing today. What we're discussing is a very large commercial grade saw, not something that you would find in a normal home use. Additionally, we're talking about a business, a business today that is not going to have the same level. Of business, let's say, six months from now, a year from now, five years from now, or ten years from now. With that being said, will, as his business grows, because like you, me, or anyone. We all want our businesses to grow. Does that mean we will have to continue to have additional permits? For this location, for the surrounding properties? That worries me, because to be honest. We bought our property so that we can retire there and have a quiet residential area. Chaparral Heights does have a homeowners association associated with it. That is literally north of this property. That is not being brought into or being discussed in this meeting at all. How is it that we have certain requirements for our HOA, but yet just south of this? He does not have the same types of requirements, where he has to be concerned about. The use of the roads. You've compared it to a a camping ground. Okay, we're not talking about a camping ground. We're talking about a business that's going to have a different viewpoint in a year, five years, ten years down the road. Two different types of businesses with two different, total different future business plans. With that being said. At what point? Are we going to be taking on a permit where he is going to be needing to build a facility to and finally enclose his business? So that it becomes indoor. Cutting mill. I don't want to see that. And I certainly know that my neighbors. up in Chaparral Heights do not want to see the same thing.
Madam Chair, we're under, we're at about thirty seconds and three minutes left.
You didn't give me a one-minute warning, if I may note that for the record. Um, my question is, if we're going to really look at this as a residential area, why not have a fifty-year moratorium to afford the increases on permits that we would have to look at overall for this property? Finally, I want to point out that in all of this presentation, you had said that you've already had four people visit it, yet you have never publicly had all of Chaparral Heights visit it. You've never had the surrounding property, south of it, east or west. And finally, I want to point out that what worries me the most is we're talking about today and we're not talking about what this residential area should look like in six months, a year, and five years down the road. And that is what I'm hoping that this commission is going to at least consider when they decide to unfortunately allow this permit through. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Nordstrom, this is Chair Ontiveris, and I have heard your concerns, and I think that the information that I'm going to put out right now is going to be helpful for everyone else that might be joining on in the public portion of this. Uh, the conditions, the recommended conditions of approval state that this conditional use permit will only be valid for a period of three years. And all of the conditions that are contained in this must be adhered to for three years. So I hope that that addresses your concerns about growth. Your concern, your statement about Chaparral Heights having an HOA and other areas not, that is simply how it is, like that's just a matter of fact. Chaparral Heights has an HOA. But those HOA on conditions do not extend to any area outside of Chaparral Heights. So you cannot uh put those conditions on adjacent properties that are not within there.
We don't want to have at least a conditions where we show this as a residential area, just in general, not even as exclusive as the HOA that is occurring at Chaparral Heights. Because one thing I don't see in here is an easement for views.
Right, and this property, and this is going to be helpful for, I believe, other members as that this property is in the general zone. And that is the zone that it is in, and that's what we're dealing with.
Okay.
So um, moving on, is there any, are there, is there anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening, please? Um, Ms. Nordstrom, can I please have you lower your hand and mute? Thank you. Um. Okay, I'm going to put it out again. Anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission, please raise your hand or unmute and I will call on you. Okay, there is an individual named James. James, please state your name and address for the record. And Mr. McNeeley, please begin the three minutes now. Go ahead.
My name is James Robertson. I live at 1191 East Buck Mountain Road. And we did submit a letter to the commission stating our position. The uh, our primary concern is property values. We're concerned about, and I understand that there's a lot of different variables that can affect property values that our main concern is is having a sawmill next door. That's uh that's really all I have to say about that.
And then this is Sharon Robertson, James's wife. I'm also at 1191 East Buck Mountain Road. Um, nothing has been said about fire danger. Uh, it gets very, very tender around here, very dry. And with a sawmill going, um, the winds in this area are generally from the south southwest. And so that would put Chaparral Heights in a lot of danger. And that's just me speaking. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for those comments, and I'm also going to read something here that I will believe, that I believe will be helpful to your comments and to anyone else that is listening in the public. In the recommended conditions of approval that I have previously referenced, there is a condition number seven that states, and I'm going to read it in full. It states, "The applicant shall demonstrate that sufficient fire service is provided as approved by the fire chief. A fire-wise and emergency response plan shall be approved by the fire chief. The fire chief shall also review and approve any infrastructure or equipment to be used on-site, all driving surface improvements and maintenance, defensible space, and any other components required by the fire service provider. A letter confirming approval by the fire and emergency service provider must be submitted to community development." So I just wanted to put that out there so you, so that the interested people in the public would understand that fire is being addressed with this use.
Uh, but ma'am, this is Mrs. Robertson again. Um, we have no fire, fire department out here.
Um. Do you have a high country fire department?
Um, which one is that one?
About three miles down the road.
Okay, it's about three miles down the road, but
And that is
I thought they had, I thought they had a cutoff, a cutoff area where they would not go to to do any firework.
And and they may, but that will be something, that will be something that the applicant will have to deal with because this condition states that the applicant shall demonstrate that sufficient fire service is provided. So uh, that that is how it is written. Okay, is there anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening? Okay. Uh, Mr. McNeeley? Oh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Stanley.
Thank you very much. Um, just a couple of things. On the red fox, on the Red Fox Lane roadway, I believe in the last fifteen years, I'm the only one that has paid to have it bladed and or maintained during this fifteen years that I've owned the property. The fire stuff, Robert Trotter from North Country Fire, I have an application from him. Been signed and submitted back to him that says he would support any fire situation that happened at my facility. I have also talked to Chad Hocker, which is the fire chief for Junipine Fire Department. And he also would say that he would support any fires suppression at my physical property. Also, I've worked with the fire chiefs to make sure I have fire extinguishers that are at ignition sites to mitigate any problem that could uh occur in a timely fashion so that these could be taken care of in minutes, not hours or, or, you know, in a timely fashion. And these are foam fire extinguishers that would be provided onsite at the locations suggested by the fire chiefs. Um, we don't have an HOA. Um, I have a lot of customers in Chaparral Heights, and I have never had anyone complain about my situation. Um, Bill Borden is the HOA president. He has given me a letter of recommendation as a personal individual, not as a participant of the HOA. Um. Let's see. I think that has any questions that I have written down that I could address. Does anybody have questions for me?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stanley. I think at this point, we're going to go ahead and move to to commission discussion. If any of the commissioners do have any further questions during commission discussion, we will reach back out to you. So please mute for now, and I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public, open it at commission level. And Commissioner Clifford, would you please start our discussion this evening?
Yeah, I see Bob has added um one recommendation, uh, number four, onsite driveways and access roads shall be improved with a twenty-foot wide all-weather surface with fourteen feet of overhead clearance. And she'll be capable of supporting a forty-two-thousand-pound public safety vehicle. I am good with that being added in there. That was one of my concerns was the road deteriorating. My other concern is that easement that comes down on the side where they have been crossing over a piece of private property onto an easement that is not part of the the legal easement for this property. And I would like a condition put in there that 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 easement be locked off and not used. Because it is not a legal easement for this property. That's the legal easement for a separate piece of property from what I am seeing from the, from the pictures that Bob has presented. Other than that, um, the fire issue has been resolved, the questions that I had, and as long as we can get the decibels down, I think we, I can make the findings to prove this.
Okay, and Commissioner Clifford, I did just want to point to condition number three uh, where it says log, log delivery trucks shall not visit the site more than twice a month on average on average for calendar year and shall only use the access easement on Red Fox Lane unless the applicant provides documentation of legal access for the road located. Is that, does that alleviate or address your concern?
It addresses my concerns, but does it alleviate it? No. Because he does have a gate going across that property. And I would like to see that gate removed unless he can show legal access to use that easement. Um, I think that gate needs to be removed.
Okay, um, we're going to go ahead and and continue in commission discussion here. So thank, and so thank you. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Clifford, at this time?
Nope, not at this time. I'll wait until the other commissioners talk and something else might pop up.
Absolutely, and I, and if so, we'll, we'll go around as many times as we need. So, Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay. I hope everyone can understand me well because I am in recovery from a cold and it's a little difficult to speak clearly this evening. First thing, I've got to agree with Commissioner Clifford and his comments, although I'm not too sure how to deal with the the gate at the southwest corner of the property other than to specify additionally that customers are not to use it or access or uh ingress from the property. Uh, but that being said, I do have to let everyone know that I visited the site with staff in October. And we did take noise readings. My noise readings that I took with my sound level meter, I was unable to successfully download those to provide noise readings that would give some idea of what the average sound levels would be over a period of ten or fifteen minutes while both the sawmill and the wood processor were operating. However, Kelly uh was able to use an app on her phone that works quite well. Uh, my observed readings agreed with the readings that she achieved with her phone. And um the bottom line here is that I use those readings to do estimated sound levels and that I provided to Mr. Short uh for his use in working with the applicant on how to deal with the sound levels that were uh recorded at the property line primarily on the west side of the property and the southwest corner. So that being said, uh, I had given Mr. Short several suggestions. Uh, it is quite obvious that in the conditions of approval that both he and the applicant have taken those quite seriously in terms of sound walls. Uh, sound walls can be very effective. And um, I think that we're headed in the right direction. I don't know how effective they're going to be because I don't know what the applicant is proposing. However, the fact of the matter is that one of the conditions specifies that sound level readings are to be taken approximately six months down the road so that can be evaluated. One thing I would say about that, rather than putting three months to resolve any problems with sound levels exceeding fifty dB A at the property line at three months, I would suggest six months um because mitigation um to clean up um sound levels and excess fifty dB A may prove to be a little bit time-consuming and they can be expensive. So I think it would be appropriate to allow a little more time, um, like six months on that. That being said, uh, the operation was actually gave us sound levels that were less than what I was expecting. I've seen operations like this before. Uh, the sawmill, um, I dealt with the gentleman who operates similar sawmill and flagstaff. There's some work I've done in the past and uh his was surprisingly quiet given the nature of the sawmill and the operation he's running. Um, so I was very favorably impressed with the operation. The other thing is that the uh firewood processing uh at the property line on the west side um was very close to the fifty dB A um that we would like to achieve. It'll be a different matter on the south side because that level could be considerably higher because it's located a hundred feet north, but is proposing a sound wall that would help to deal with that quite nicely. And that being said, the only thing I'm disappointed with is the fact that the whole operation isn't in the center of the property, but then again, um, that would have um put the sound levels at the property line to the north um at somewhat higher levels and would still require mitigation. So I think it's best that we try it here uh for the specified period of time of three years. Uh, and basically, I don't have anything more to say about it unless somebody has a question about sound levels and sound level mitigation that I might be able to answer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Uh, Mr. Short, could I have you go to the conditions on now, please? And on condition number two, um, we are going, we're certainly going to get all of the commissioners' thoughts on this, but going back to what I had addressed on right after you did your staff presentation, where it talks about if we do need to have additional measures, I do, I'm going to concur with Commissioner Ruggles with that six months is um, to me is more reasonable. Could you please craft a sentence in there? And I just want to let the other commissioners know that your, your thoughts are going to be taken in. We're just kind of starting here. And on condition number three, um, could you also add some, some kind of verbiage in there that, because this just does address the log delivery trucks and to address Commissioner Clifford and Commissioner And to address Commissioner Clifford and Commissioner Ruggles concerns that that access road not be anything other than the Red Fox Lane be used. Let's also put in customers there. And I have always found that if you don't, if you can put a lock on a gate and that a chain and a lock and that works pretty darn good. I I've used that myself. So on the next, let's see, Commissioner Clifford, your hand is raised.
Just got a thought on that. Like Commissioner Ruggles was talking, I was listening to him and also thinking about this. The gate at the southwest corner shall be used for emergency egress only and no commercial or public usage.
Okay, and I and I
Yeah, that's just some verbiage that I came up with. Because that there's only one way into the property on It's a good point. On the one lane. And if something happens at the mill and they need to get out and they can't get back to that initial the 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 main entrance, they can use that as an emergency access and that's that's it. No commercial or public usage from his property.
Okay, yeah, no customer log use. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clifford, and yeah, keep 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 going there, Mr. Short. Commissioner Williams.
Um, yeah, my concern was including regular retail customers in number three, but oh, good, I think it's not quite done. I don't think you want to say that retail customers can only go there twice a month. Seems like that shouldn't matter. But anyway, other than that, once we get that ironed out, I think the conditions in my mind cover all the concerns pretty well.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Williams. Vice Chair Burton.
I'm glad Jim read Commissioner Clifford readdressed the gate thing because that was going to be my my suggestion was that we don't do anything with it other than just specify it's emergency vehicles for access. The one thing that is still weighing on me is Saturday operations. I understand that the customers need to be able to go on Saturday to pick up firewood because people work during the week, might not be able to get there. My concern is with the actual milling operations on Saturday and creating that noise for a six day when people are off work and they may want to be able to enjoy a quiet environment and not have commercial activity going on. So that is currently my only concern. Because I know I wouldn't be super happy if I was listening to commercial operations at my house on a Saturday. So I'm trying to think about it from the neighbors, the immediate neighbors perspectives. Because I did read their concerns. And I think most of what has been mostly has been mitigated, but even at fifty D B, I feel like a commercial noise of any kind on a Saturday is not really appropriate. But I do think that customers need to be able to access and pick up like firewood and stuff like that. So that's just kind of where I'm leaving that. And I would like maybe other commissioners to put in their two cents on that.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, you did you did ask us to ask you about noise questions. Can you can you explain what fifty D B A is? What can you liken that to? So we've all got a really good reference point of what that would sound like.
Let's say that, yes, I can help a little bit with that. A a normal conversation. There you go. There's there is a very good chart. This is looking at a conversation with among several people would typically run like the chart shows about sixty D B. If it's just two people, hey, down there around fifty, if you've got a radio or TV playing in the background. I've measured the sound levels in my shop here. And that without me saying anything, just just the radio going at a moderate level and nothing else running, it will still register about fifty. And the other thing that I can add to this is when we were there in October, both Kelly and I took a look at ambient sound levels. Ambient sound levels in a forested area like that can go anywhere from a lower thirty under absolute calm conditions to as high as sixty. I've measured. I was just astounded when I measured it here in the area where I live. Now, that being said, if you have fifty D B A at the property line, the neighbors to the south and west are about six hundred and fifty feet away from the equipment. Without anything else, the sound level at their home would be down around let's say very close to thirty eight to forty. It could even be lower because the trees do provide some sound attenuation. But it would be very close to ambient, but there are impact sounds. There are other sounds that are going to be heard that can go very briefly higher. And this is getting to what Commissioner Burton was asking about on Saturdays. Those things you are going to hear. And if you have a quiet day without much wind, yeah, you're going to hear that on a on a Saturday. And it can be a little disconcerting. So with respect to saying restricting operations to five days a week other than customer pickup. I think the rest of the commission should consider this very closely.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, what are your thoughts on that? If I'm understanding you correctly, you would like to limit it to five days a week with customer pickup on Saturday only.
I do think that would be a good idea. And keep in mind that if this is is an economic burden on the applicant, this is a short term C U P. And we should be able to go forward and work with the applicant and the neighbors for years down the road to sort this sort of thing out. But it may be more work during the week, but if you just have sales going on a Saturday, I think that would be advisable.
Okay, all right. I'm I'm going to go ahead and move through the rest of the commissioners. Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'm in concurrence with the gist of what's what I'm hearing here. I agree that Saturday should be sales, but not commercial operations. I think we've taken care of the decibel issue. They have to come up with fifty D B A at the property line after six months. I certainly, you know, I I read the second condition of approval carefully and I understand the neighbor's point of view, but I think the issues are view sheds, noise and traffic. And I think we've addressed all those and this is a local business, serves the local population. So I think we've got the balance about right here and I think I can make the findings once we get all these issues into the conditions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. And this is Chair Ontiveris and I do want to take a close look. I do see that you're still working on condition number one, Bob. Can you can you go down to get? I can only see part of condition number two. Can you make condition number two completely visible for all of the commissioners? Because I want to be sure. Okay, thank you. Give me just a minute. Okay, these are my comments. I have thoroughly read condition number two. That addresses the concern for me that I had talked about. Can you, Bob, scoot up condition number three so we can see it fully, please?
There does need to be a change that August thirtieth, twenty twenty three does not reflect the six months. You need to add three months to that. That should be from May, correct?
Yeah, you are. You are absolutely correct on that. So June, June, July, August, September, October, it'd be November. Yeah. Okay, so now with that modification, I my my concerns have been addressed there. Now I'm looking at condition number three. Okay, and I am also, I am okay with condition number three. That also addresses my concerns. And yeah, that's my cat in the background. I have no idea why she needs my immediate attention, but on as far as on I believe the other thing that is that has been talked about, it was brought up by Vice Chair Burton and discussed by Commissioner Ruggles and Commissioner Best about the five day a week for the commercial operation pickup by customers on Saturday. I know here one of the homes I have is in actually in an H O A. And our conditions there are that there cannot be any like Sunday is the day off, but any other day there can be, we, you know, landscaping, building, any of those kinds of things. And they have never bothered me to have it done on a Saturday. And those those are sounds that I hear of building, of landscaping, of maintenance work, et cetera. So I personally have no problem with this with this operating six days a week. But I'm going to see what the other commissioners, I know Vice Chair Burton has expressed hers opinion, Commissioner Best and Commissioner Ruggles. I would like to go back and just get Commissioner Clifford and Commissioner Williams' thoughts on that. And then we'll move forward. But beyond that, I can support this. I can make the findings. The I do believe that the issues that the the neighbors have raised have been adequately addressed. And if they haven't been addressed to begin with, there is a plan B to get them addressed. This is a short time period, three years. And I think that it serves a very valuable purpose. So I am I am very supportive of that. But I am going to go back to Commissioner Clifford and Commissioner Williams and get their thoughts on the five days a week, six days a week, and then let's go ahead and move forward from there. So Commissioner Clifford, chime in.
I can go either way on the Saturday. And I understand people are coming up from different areas to their homes up there because they are a lot of them are second homes. There are a lot of people that live there full time. And when they come up to their 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 getaway, they want it to be quiet. They're getting away from the hustle and bustle of the city. So I can understand where we limited to sales and product pickup, product pickup only.
Okay, okay. So it sounds like you're leaning more towards either one would be fine, but you're leaning more towards
Either one, either one is fine, but general, general majority, I think, would like it this way. So yeah, I I can go either way with it.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Williams, could you just share your thoughts on that issue?
Yeah, I concur with what Commissioner Clifford just said, actually. You know, I didn't have a real strong opinion either way, but I I can see if it works for the if it can work for the applicant to just do sales on Saturday, that would that would be pretty sweet.
Okay. All right.
And maybe this is something we should talk to the applicant about to find out how much they actually do do on Saturday.
Yeah, I think that's I think that's a good idea. Mr. Mr. Stanley. Could you please unmute and address this?
Yes, Chair, yes, Chairman. The only thing I can suggest about Saturday use, we don't live in a very positive environment. It's like in Arizona at that at that address. And we could be out two or three days a week because of weather, wind, snow, rain, we could be rained out for a whole week. And it's just real, real hard to say no Saturday processing and stuff like that. Saturdays are not normally a day that we do this on. I mean, I'm I don't know if the staff knows this, but I'm seventy four years old. I don't want to work Saturdays and Sundays. But there's occasions because of weather conditions that it's it's only good business to get the stuff delivered and or completed on time as as committed to.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. On thank you for that, Mr. Stanley. And and good news that you don't like to work Saturday and Sunday, but you don't get to work here on Sunday. So there's there's your good news.
I don't excuse me, I don't have very much customer traffic. People come in and order stuff and I deliver. Firewood people that because of this economic decision this that we're going through don't have enough money to pick up a full quart at a time or deliver, they're picking up what they need for a week or ten days because that's all they have to suffice. So my traffic is not extreme with customers coming and going and stuff like this. It's very minimal.
Can can I ask a question then? Would you be amenable to, you know, so we're talking about just rare occurrences. So would you be amenable to no more than two Saturdays a month? Something like that. Would that fall into your current use pattern? Just to give, I I'm just trying to give neighbors a peace of mind that they won't necessarily hear something every single Saturday. So would like say two Saturdays a month limit? It doesn't matter what day it is, like which which Saturday it is, but is that something that falls into your normal operation? Like if you're not out there every single Saturday, is it only one or two a month kind of thing?
As long as they can guarantee me, I can have five days working from Monday to Friday. I have no problem with that.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Burton, I think I think that that is a very good balance that if Commissioner, Mr. Short, if you could do that because that would help the applicant if he does get rained out during the week. And I did, I did forget to to mention to him at the beginning when I did read the meeting rules and procedures. The chat button is not to be used for any purpose other than for technical issues. If you're having a problem accessing something other than that. The chat is not part of the record and I will not be addressing it. So on I believe based on the conversation that Vice Chair Burton had with the applicant that that is a very good balance on for the neighbors and for the applicant. So I'm going to run back through real quick and ask Commissioner Clifford if he is okay with that. And I'm just going to go down the line. Commissioner Clifford.
Oh, yeah, I put a period after Saturday. The other one, there you go, right there. For period there and forest products can occur. A period there. And forest projects can occur only on two Saturdays a month, weather permitting.
Okay, there we go.
What, 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 weather permitting?
Weather permitting, okay.
Yep. Obviously, if there's bad weather, he's not going to be out there. But if we say every other Saturday and every other Saturday's got snow and rain, that leaves the two Saturdays that are nice that he can't do anything. It's going to be on a weather permitting.
Yeah, that, that covers it because I didn't want to limit him which Saturday. I wanted that to be, yeah, conditions, yeah, conditions permitting.
Okay, so we've got Commissioner Ruggles. What are your thoughts?
I agree completely with Commissioner Clifford's recommendations for this. Makes sense to me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I think this is a good compromise. That last sentence in condition one has two unlies in it though, so maybe get rid of the second one. Just for grammar.
Okay, there we go. Okay, Vice Chair Burton?
Yeah, I think that covers it for me. That was all the conditions were.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Best?
I'm almost there. Let's go back to weather permitting, please. I think we have two interpretations of weather permitting. I think the applicant's interpretation is if he had a bad weather month, he could do four Saturdays. And our interpretation is he could do two Saturdays if they were nice Saturdays. I would put a period after month. There can only be two, two Saturdays a month where there's noise. That's, I think that's what we're after here.
Do we take out the weather permitting or what?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that works because we're not telling him what Saturdays.
Right. Just two, two Saturdays a month and have at it. With that, I'm, I'm fine. I'm with you.
Okay, now with these modifications that we have done, as they stand right now, I, I am in complete agreement with them. So with that, why don't we go ahead and move forward with a motion in a second, please?
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt, but I did make a slight change to number three where I moved Southwest Gate and Access Road up here because it seems to, it seemed to fit better.
Okay, let's, let's all the commissioners review it. Okay, and I do believe that all of the issues that we have discussed have been addressed in these, in these conditions.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Stanley?
Yes. Can I ask a question?
Yes, please go ahead.
There's, there's a property on the end of the easement of that road that has given me permission to use that road. If I had permission from two out of the three lot owners, would that be sufficient for me to get access to that?
I'm sure I can answer that if you.
Yeah, if you could, if you could, Mr. Short, please address that.
My understanding is that you have to get permission from all property owners that have rights to an access easement before you can use the access easement.
Is that factual, assuming that, Bob?
Can, can we have counsel weigh in on that?
Bob, is that for sure or is that just an assumption?
No, that's, I don't have any kind of legal thing to point to. But whenever you have an access easement, then certain people are granted access. And yeah, I, I don't have any kind of legal statute to point to, possibly a legal counsel or Mr. McNeely could, could address that. But that's, that's my understanding is that you, you have to have all parties agree on it before you can add additional people to the agreement. So there's a, there's a grantor of the easement. It's possible that the person that owns the easement could grant it to additional people, you know, latterly. But I don't really understand how someone who, who doesn't own the actual land, the land that the easement is on, that is, that is typically the grantor of the easement. So, so they can grant it to others, possibly, but someone that doesn't actually own the land, I don't really understand how they could grant it to other users.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Garnes, our legal counsel, to weigh in on this, please.
Yes, Mr. Short has it right. The, the grantor of the easement is the property owner. And if the, that property owner was to give legal permission in the form of an easement to the applicant to use a certain road or whatever it might be, that would, that would work. It's different, just like Mr. Short said, when there may be someone who, who owns an easement, who in that case is the grantee, the easement is granted to them. A grantee can't transfer their interest in an easement to someone else without the permission of the, of the grantor. I hope that makes sense.
Madam Chair, this is Jess McNeely with, with Community Development Staff. My, I believe the, the simplest way to get to the issue here is if the subject property owner, the applicant can demonstrate that they have, that, that they have legal access to an easement, then they would have legal access to that easement. Currently, this property owner does not have legal access to the easement or to the, to the road, what we would consider a road or even possibly a driveway. But they don't have legal access to the southwest corner of their property. They would have to demonstrate that they have that legal access, that that legal access would, would be documented in an easement. If they had access to that easement, then they have legal access to the easement. So and then of course, just like the conditional use permit, that runs with the land, not with individual property owners. It's, it's a, it's a land use issue that would be granted to this property.
Okay, all right, I got you. Thank you. Thank all of you for that input. And so then to answer your question, Mr. Stanley, if you want to use that road, you have to provide community development proof that you have access to that. Otherwise, you can't use it, okay?
I understand. I have done some homework on that. And the gentleman that had that lot originally and sold it had, he was the person that owned the access of that road to that lot because it couldn't be landlocked.
Okay, well, if, if you can, if you can get the easement, if you can, if you can obtain that and show proof of it, then you have access there, okay? But until you can, it can only be used for emergency access at this time. So that could be something you can work on.
I understand.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to go back to the commission. I do believe now. Okay. Is it, did everyone see the addition that Mr. Short just put on in yellow on number three? And I'm okay with that. If everyone else is okay with that.
That's not an addition. That's just highlighting something that is already there.
Okay. Okay, so with that, if the commission is ready, let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please.
Okay, I would be willing to go with a motion on this. I move that the commission approve CUP 22-083 with conditions as stated on the screen and written by staff and the rest of the commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Clifford to approve CUP 22-083. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
And this is Chair Ontiveris, and I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. And the next item on the agenda is ZC 22-013.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this case is also being managed by Bob Short. That's a zone change from G to RR5 in the Parks area. And Bob's sharing his screen. So Bob, if you want to go ahead and give your presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jess. This case is the Munoz Zone Change, that's CC 2213. In this case, the, the property owners are Carlos and Tina Munoz of Parks, Arizona, Warren and Bonnie McFarland of Parks, Arizona, Circle B Investments LLC of Glendale, Arizona, and Jeffrey and Evelyn Parkland of Spring Valley, California. The applicant is Carlos Munoz of Parks, and the zoning is general. That's a 10 acre minimum parcel size zone. And the total size of the six properties involved is 59.8 acres. And in this case, their request is a zone change on six parcels from general, that's 10 acre minimum parcel size zone, to the RR5 rural residential five acre minimum parcel size zone. So vicinity map showing the subject property. This is Parks, the Parks area, of course. And this is I-40 running through. This is the railroad on this end. And these are the six properties. Route 66 runs through up here and the properties are accessed across. There's actually an overpass on the interstate right here and some forest roads that run to the south and up to the north and to the west here to access the properties. And this is an arrow photo showing the property. You can see that road better here. It goes north and then runs this way. It's dedicated, it's called a forest road, but it just provides access to these properties as far as I can tell. This is a photo of that forest road on the north side as it goes across the Munoz property on the north. It shows the property generally on the left. This is an existing home on the property. On one of the properties, I should say. And this is an access gate from the south forest road into the property on the southwest side. And here's some background on this case. The African actually came to us for a pre-app meeting to find out if it was feasible to, to do a zone change on his property only. That's Carlos Munoz's property only. And actually, the Parks area plan does support zone changes to allow five acre parcels in this area. However, staff looked at it and said, you know, this would pretty much be a spot zone if you didn't get others involved in this. So the African actually talked to his neighbors and his neighbors agreed to sign up and also become part of this zone change. And I wanted to show you this. This is actually, this section is called out in the Parks area plan, section 32. And it indicates that this northeast corner of section 32 is appropriate for a zone change that results in parcel size at five acres. Currently, it's obviously Zone G, which is a 10 acre minimum parcel size. In terms of citizen participation, property owners within 300 feet of the applicant's property were notified of the zone change and invited to a neighborhood meeting held onsite on August 4th, 2022. Three property owners attended the meeting. And as I said before, in the process, they all agreed to include their properties in the zone change. One additional property owner was notified, but they did not attend the meeting. So, and staff hasn't received any comments in this application. This is the, these are the findings for a zone change. And this is staff analysis. The zone change is consistent with the conference of plan and the Parks area plan, as I've discussed. The zone change would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, or welfare. And obviously with the five acre minimum parcel size, that pretty much does retain the character of the surrounding neighborhood. It doesn't add a lot of density to this area and all the property owners have, of course, agreed to this. And with that, staff recommends the commission forwards a recommendation of approval of ZC 2213 to the Board of Supervisors. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Okay, Mr. Short, I am not seeing any. So I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the case. I would like the applicant to state their name and address for the record. And I'm going to ask if you have received the staff report about it and agree with it.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Go ahead.
Okay, this is Carlos Munoz, and I really appreciate your time this evening. I know it seems like these meetings could take a little time. But anyways, I did read the recommendation and it seems that everything's in line with what we were jointly communicating back and forth with, with Mr. Short and some of the other key members on zoning and planning. And we felt that they did a great job in helping us, guide us through the process of getting our neighbors involved and, and towards a successful resolution.
Okay, Mr. Munoz, would you please state your address for the record?
Okay. Address is 12963 East Old Route 66, Parks, Arizona, 86018.
Okay, thank you. With that, do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? And I'm not seeing any, Mr. Munoz. So I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please unmute or raise your hand. And I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it at commission level. Commissioner Clifford?
It's pretty straightforward. It's, it's, it's part of the Parks Area Plan overview, so I can make the findings to approve this.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
All I can say is that this is the way we would like to see it work every time. And with that, I can make the findings for forwarding this recommendation for zone change to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I can make the findings to recommend approval.
Okay, Vice Chair Burton?
I can make the recommend, I can make the findings for recommendation for approval.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
I can make the findings as well.
Okay, and this is Chair Ontiveris. I also can make the findings. And I would just, this is going to kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Ruggles said. But this is, this is a really, really between staff. I would like to actually commend them because they're the ones that talked to the applicant and said, hey, you know, what would, what would work here? And this, this whole thing, the communication between staff, the And this, this whole thing, the communication between staff, the applicant, the applicant and the neighbors. Um, has, has worked really, really well. This is an example of really great, uh. Community involvement and working well together. So those are just my personal comments, and with that, let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a, uh, motion that we recommend approval of ZC twenty-two zero one-three to the Board of Supervisors.
I will second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Vice Chair Burton, a second by Commissioner Ruggles. To recommend approval to the Board of, uh, Supervisors for ZC two-two zero one-three. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
And this is Chair Ontiveris, I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. And the final item on the agenda is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission? And not seeing any, uh, my clock says seven nineteen PM. So I would like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. And we will see you guys on January four, fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Madam Chair, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for listening to the, all of the sound stuff. Now, have a good holiday season, please.
Hey, John, John, I can relate to what you're going through. I, I, today is the first day that I've actually. Felt halfway decent in two and a half weeks.
You and I both.
So, yeah, it, it's going around.